Good evening. I would like to call to order the regular meeting of the Boulder Valley School District Board of Education for Tuesday, November 10th. Sandy, will you please call the roll?
Albright.
Here.
Belville.
Here.
Benford.
Here.
Fuqua. Re- Marcus.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Reed.
Here.
Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I would like to remind everyone who has joined us here this evening of the vision of the Boulder Valley School District. We develop our children's greatest abilities to make possible the discovery and pursuit of their dreams, which, when fulfilled, will benefit us all. We provide a comprehensive and innovative approach to education and graduate successful, curious, lifelong learners who confidently confront the great challenges of their time. And for today, I'm going to deviate just a little bit and invite two guests who have joined us to come to the podium before we do the superintendent's report. I would like to invite Bruce Coy, who is the Director of CASE, the Colorado Association of School Executives, and his colleague Brent Curtis, who's come all the way from Craig, Colorado, to join us at the podium. Gentlemen, welcome. We're glad you're here.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam President, and members of the board. And we are here for such an exciting award. Bruce Messenger is the 2016 Colorado Superintendent of the Year.
Yep.
And this is really-
(applause)
It's a special award for a number of reasons, but one of the most significant aspects of this award is that Bruce was selected by previous Superintendent of the Year Award winners, who are all his peers from lots of different types of settings. And one of the things that I've noticed in terms of Bruce's leadership is he's very cognizant and aware, not just about what happens in Boulder. He's very good at what community building means and what it means to be a superintendent in a place like Boulder, which, by the way, I know something about. My mom graduated from Boulder High, so it's a town and a community that has a lot of bearing on my family. But he also takes a statewide vantage, and that's what I appreciate. As the Executive Director of CASE, the Colorado Association of School Executives, it's important for our district leaders to sometimes come out of that box that sometimes we live in and take a view that is for all kids in the state, regardless of their zip code. And Bruce does that better than almost anybody I can think of. His state view has resulted in very common sense approaches to school funding and to things as controversial as testing of students. He's taken a lead on these issues, and it's been very effective in this role. I also certainly have noticed his effectiveness in terms of his own community leadership. Last year, your board, your community, supported a $576 million bond election, which is just, you know, it's not a- it's a tough lift to pass something of that magnitude, and you did it, and congratulations, because that's the kind of thing that serves not just the students in school today, but in generations to come. Bruce's nomination was made by Fran Ryan. She's the CEO of Impact on Education, and Dr. Ron Cabrera, who's Assistant Superintendent here. And I just want to read a couple of remarks from them. "Bruce truly embodies the high ideals expected of our educational leaders in our K-12 public education system and in our country. He gives voice on encouraging additional school funding and providing realistic path about current assessment practices." This award is about leadership. Bruce is a leader among leaders, and we're honored that he is the Colorado Superintendent of the Year. He also will be eligible to be National Superintendent of the Year. This program is put forward by the American Association of School Administrators, AASA, and Bruce will be put into a bucket of superintendents with 50 others from all the states, and they will choose a National Superintendent of the Year that'll be put forward at the National Conference on Education that'll take place in Phoenix in February of 2016. So we're honored. We're looking forward to working with Bruce for the coming year, making sure that his voice is heard. And now I'd like to invite Brent Curtis, who's the President of the Colorado Association of Senior School Administrators, Department of CASE.
Thank you. Well, good evening, Board of Education, and good evening, Bruce. This is a special time. A special time not only for you as a board, because we know it takes a unified hand between the superintendent and the board to create great leadership, and you have it here. And it's an honor to drive across the state, to be here tonight, to give and be a part of an award with you. But I'm going to make it a little more personable. When we had superintendent retreats or conventions this year, I want you to know that Bruce would stand up, no matter who was there, whether it was 50 or over 100 superintendents, and his voice carried. People listened to Bruce because of his leadership skill. For me, as a fairly new superintendent, I listened to Bruce, and, you know, you made an impact on my life. Just standing and being able to know that Bruce had the courage to stand up and take on the issue, whether it was in conflict or not, did not matter, and led our superintendents on many issues, and we continue to welcome your leadership. You know, John Quincy Adams once said that your actions are defined by how you inspire people to perform, to do, and to really learn. And you've done that for me and the colleagues that you represent. So thank you, Bruce, from my heart, for the great work that you've done and the work coming up. Thank you very much. And Bruce? (applause) So now this is where you're going to come up and join us.
So we have an award to present to Bruce. It says, "Bruce Messenger, Boulder Valley School District, Colorado Superintendent of the Year, 2016." Congratulations, Bruce.
(applause) Thank you to my colleagues and friends, and thanks to all of you that are here to help me celebrate this. This is a significant honor for me personally and professionally, and I think for our school district and for our state. And as I've written several notes in the last two weeks, after having found out about this recognition, I will do my best to represent our school district and our state as this goes forward. As was mentioned, a strong voice in leadership is really important, particularly in our state at this time, because of the need to secure adequate funding for schools across the state, from Boulder Valley to Craig to all corners of our state. And I am committed to do that work and going forward. And I want to offer a special thanks to you as my board members and other board members who offered me an opportunity to come to the Boulder Valley School District in 2011. I was having a great time in Helena, Montana. Had served 14 years as a superintendent in that community and loved that work, but having the opportunity to come to this incredible school district, serving nine communities and 31,000 students, and sitting just a half hour away from the state Capitol to do work there, was an incredible opportunity for me. I've enjoyed this work immensely. I've appreciated the support of this community and all that we do together. In CASE as an organization, the School Executives of Colorado is a powerful organization. What I enjoy about the organization is the fine leadership. Under Bruce's leadership as Executive Director and all of my colleagues, and also it's an umbrella organization, meaning we have business officials and technology officials and principals and on and on and on. So it's a group we gather once or twice a year, 800-plus individuals that gather to celebrate our profession and also learn and play together. So this is a real honor, and I will go forth and do the work that I've been doing as I'm in my 19th year, serving as a superintendent of schools, my 38th year in this profession. This is my life's work, and I've got a lot of years ahead of me, and I so much appreciate this opportunity. So thank you. (applause)
Well, thank you, Bruce Coy and Brent Curtis, for coming and joining us this evening. Thank you very much. Yeah. Well, so now we'll revert back to our regular board agenda, and that would be the superintendent's report. So, Dr. Messenger, tell us where we are.
All right. Great.
What's going on?
Well, again, thanks for our guests, but also thanks for all of our guests for being here this evening. I know there's a number of important issues that we're going to address this evening. So I have a few items I'd like to just brief the board on and the viewing audience and those in the room this evening. First of all, what has happened since we were last together is the governor has proposed a budget for the state of Colorado, and included in that, of course, is K-12 education. And as you probably have read in the media, this budget is based on present law, and there is some concern because of the effect of the Taxpayer Bill of Rights, and this will be our first year that we'll do tax refunds up to the tune of nearly $400 million. And so the challenge with this state budget presented by the governor is it will actually reduce services, including to K-12 education, even though we have this robust economy going on in our state, because under the Taxpayer Bill of Rights, if the economy and the tax generated from the economy exceed inflation and growth as a state, then any additional funds are refunded to the citizens. And so that's what's going to happen this year if something doesn't happen in this legislative session. And so the negative factor, which is our scorecard to keeping track of how we're underfunding public schools, which we had worked to reduce that negative factor in recent years under the governor's proposed budget, actually increases the negative factor by $50 million. So that takes a step backwards, which we're concerned about. I won't take time this evening to elaborate on this, because we'll have opportunity as we make our way to the session, but one remedy, maybe not the only remedy, that's within the scope of this legislative session would be to move the hospital provider fee from a tax to an enterprise fund and have it be a fee, which would take it out of the Tabor limitation, which would free up dollars within the state's general fund, so we could put more money in K-12 education, in higher education, and other services needed in our state. So as was stated earlier, this is our work. We're working hard on this, and we'll continue to advocate for adequate funding for schools throughout the state. The other thing I wanted to mention is that we had announced two weeks ago, I think, that we were planning to host on the 17th of November, the Building a Better Colorado Community Meeting in Boulder. That has been postponed, not canceled, but they did some reorganization, and so likely after the first of the year. We'll keep in touch with everyone, obviously. We would hope to host it here at the Ed Center when they reschedule it. Again, so we'll keep you informed with that, but I just wanted you to know that that's off your calendar for now, but we'll keep you informed. Real quick update on Casey Middle School. We have, I've shared with you and with the community, the most recent report by Dr. Mike Van Dyke, where he took a look at the air quality assessments that were done in September, and also the symptom survey. This is the second round of those he's done as a part of his master plan that he's presented to the district. And overall, if you had a chance to read that report, you recognize that the survey would indicate things in general have improved, and overall, the air quality is in the good range, and so they feel good about that testing. There were some noted things that they are following up on. In fact, just this week, now we are administering the second assessment. You might recall these are staged through the year, so we can have, well, different times of the year, multiple events, but also as the weather condition change, barometric pressure changes, to make sure the solutions we implemented last spring hold through a full year with all of those changing conditions. And so Dr. Richard Shaughnessy is here on site overseeing some of that work, along with our technicians, and also Brad Turk, who worked with us. He's out of New Mexico. Will join Richard tomorrow. One of the things we're continuing to test to make sure we've got right is the pressure in the building, so we have the right pressure balance in the building. So a lot of the improvements, the work we did last spring are bearing the good results that we hoped they would. But this is just the second review of that. I had communicated with the National Institute of Occupational Safe and Healthy, NIOSH, and asked when we would receive their report. You'd committed to try to make a decision around an appeal on this at the last meeting, and we're hoping that we can have that before December 1st. We realize that we've got a holiday in there, so if it's appropriate and we receive the report, we might consider convening a special meeting of the board on or before December 1st, if that's possible. If not, you've made a commitment to make a decision by December 15th, and you do have a board meeting scheduled for December 8th with regard to that appeal. But either way, you'll get the NIOSH report with their recommendations as we go forward. So an update on that. One of the reasons, Dr. Shaughnessy from the University of Tulsa was in the community in addition to working at Casey Middle School as an air quality expert. He also, as you know, is professor on staff of the University of Tulsa. We requested, it was a part of my response, actually, to this complaint filed this spring, is that we would get a proposal from the University of Tulsa on these Tools for Schools, which is an Environmental Protection Agency, an EPA project, one of which Richard Shaughnessy was very involved in developing a number of years ago. So Don Orr and I met this afternoon with Richard, and so he has presented conceptually what this plan, a two-year plan, would look like, working with all 56 of our schools going forward. And so we've asked him to go ahead and cost that out and bring that to us for consideration. We believe it's the right thing to do. So beyond our work at Casey Middle School around air quality, what we've come to learn is that there's opportunity, working with the University of Tulsa and EPA, to really implement school district-wide the kind of air quality program that would probably be one of the first in the country when we do this. And of course, in Boulder, we like to do things first in the country. And so some of what we received, another research study not done by Dr. Shaughnessy, but by one of his colleagues today, that again talks about the value of air quality as it relates not just to health, but also academic performance. So, you know, we want to proceed with that. We'll bring more of that back to you later, once we get a final proposal from Dr. Shaughnessy. This Thursday is the P E B C Superintendent's Forum that'll be hosted in Denver, the Public Education and Business Coalition Forum. I will be on a panel of a half a dozen superintendents that we present to 500 business leaders and education leaders of the state of Colorado. This is my third year or fourth, I think, I've had the opportunity to do that. It's generally a fairly engaging and sometimes entertaining forum that goes on. I think it's a great opportunity for attendees to hear the kind of the state of education from districts in the Denver metro area and beyond. Last week, I had the opportunity to attend the suburban school superintendent's conference in Boston, and this conference moves to different places of the country, and the host city presents their expertise. And so we spent a fair amount of time with folks from Harvard at the end of last week around our profession and work that's going on and some pretty cutting-edge things. It was a very educational experience. I am the only representative from Colorado that participates in this conference. I hope to change that over time, but about 50 or 60 superintendents from around the country are a member of this organization. So, and then I want to end my comments, unless there are questions, of course, to talk a little bit about some of the topics that may be before the board this evening around the Ideal School Day. So I just wanted to give you a real quick update. So the Ideal School Day Task Force is continuing their work and doing both gathering information and also listening to gather information to work towards their final recommendations, which are projected to be in January. We've tentatively scheduled a work session for the board in January to have a chance to put your eyes on them. You'll probably see the recommendations before that, but a chance for us to visit about those. We conducted a listening circle last week, which I had mentioned that we were going to do, that included stakeholders, parents, classroom teachers, specialists, principals, and central office staff that would have interest in this topic and really worked to get a diverse set of perspectives, and I think we accomplished that. And so that didn't mean they all agreed. It wasn't a consensus circle. It was a listening circle. So the format was that members of the task force had a chance to listen to those perspectives as well. So it wasn't just the folks in the circle listening to each other, but also members of the task force to hear what thoughts or opinions were around that. Met again today. They're working, continuing to work. And last evening, Sandy Riplinger and members of the task force had a chance to meet with our student advisory committee. Under Dr. Mark Schaefer's leadership, we've formed an advisory committee of students that represent all of our secondary schools, both at the high school level and middle school level. The high school students gathered last night, so they had a chance to engage on some of the topics, probably most specifically related to high school, that are coming, that are being at least discussed in this task force. So that was a rich feedback for us as well. Again, plan to have those recommendations in my office by January and present it to the superintendent's office, and then we'll set up a work session with the board and the community to work through some of these recommendations. I just want to acknowledge, you've received a lot of correspondence on these issues, on different aspects of it, and as have we, and we've shared those with the task force members, so it's been a great opportunity to hear. I presented last night to Coal Creek Elementary School teachers and parents and had a chance to visit with them. Great dialogue around these issues. And obviously, what becomes really apparent is there isn't just one perfect way to do this. There's lots of ways to put this package together, and we're working on trying to find the next best way, knowing that we'll probably continue this work. And just to remind you that our commitment around this is to create a balanced school day, so that we can fulfill all of our commitments to students around teaching and learning and reading and mathematics and social studies and science and music and art and on and on. So trying to find that right balance, knowing that probably seven hours with us every day is probably plenty, that we ask the children to be with us. We're trying to get to a standard length of school day as well, but we think with the right balance and the right focus, we can achieve that. The last thing I will say on this topic is that we initiated a page on the district website that you can link off the main page, and so we've tried to, you've seen, I've tried to direct folks to that. Gives a nice background, not extensive, but enough, background of why we have this task force, the work they've been charged to do by the Board of Education and the Boulder Valley Education Association, and what tasks before them. There's also a place where folks can link in and give comment. They don't have to identify themselves if they want follow-up. They can, so that we've gathered some input through that process as well, because not everybody can come to a board meeting or doesn't, they don't necessarily send emails, or maybe they do both, and they're welcome to do that. So we'll continue to get input, I would guess, through this fall semester, and then finalize our recommendations for January. So anybody just wanted to give you an update. That work continues, and I'd be glad to answer questions about the Ideal Task Force, Ideal School Day Task Force, or any of the other topics that are on your minds. Thank you, Board.
Thank you. Board members. Tina.
First of all, congratulations on the CASE award. That's really good.
Thank you.
And so exciting that you received, deservedly so, that honor.
Thank you.
But CASE makes me think of Casey, so I just wanted to ask some questions about Casey. So the first one, is it mentioned in the report that they should monitor Room B220?
Yeah.
Which room is that? Do you know? And why?
I think it's just from some of the reports that have come in, both past and present. So one of the things they're doing with this is doing some spot checking, so keeping the monitors in the same place, the multiple places in the building, over time to get good baseline data is their strategy. But if there are reports, whether, you know, if they're founded or not, I mean, we've, some of the survey data helps us with that, so they're doing some spot checking on that, and also looking back at historical data to make sure. I mean, what they're really trying to do is kind of make sure that we've covered all the bases. So not anything specific. I think they're just trying to make sure if there is any concern. You noted in the one report that there was some reported incidence of odors or something, so I think they're just following up on those to make sure that there isn't anything contributing to that. They have not found any hydrogen sulfide in the building.
Was that on the sixth-grade floor, do you know, or the B220?
I think on the second floor, yes.
Second floor, okay.
Yeah.
The other thing is it noted that the number of respondents in the second symptom survey conducted in early fall was lower.
Than the first.
Eligible by about 20 or 30.
Right.
People. Why is that?
Well, it's a voluntary survey, and so I know that Justin McMillan, the principal, and Dr. Van Dyke have worked to encourage participation. They shortened this survey up. I think Mike talked about that in his last report, that they got some baseline data that they wouldn't need to recollect every time. So, I mean, I think it's like survey fatigue. I think this is voluntary, so we're going to try to continue to encourage participation. So I think it's just folks willing to take the time to do it, so.
Okay.
I mean, that's my general sense in talking to Justin.
Okay. And then are they doing the symptom survey this week?
Yes. I mean, I'm not sure quite when, but yes, it's at the same time they do the air quality testing.
Okay, and it doesn't impact that tomorrow's a day off of school?
I may already, I just don't know, Tina, if it's already been completed. I don't know when they, but they would time it sometime during this testing window.
Okay. Um, okay, thank you.
Yeah, you bet.
Sure. Shelley.
Just follow along with those questions about Casey. So what do they attribute the continuing smell to, since there are still people reporting it? Is that why you're talking about air balancing again, or is there some other?
Well, there's really not been, so there's not any documentation that there is an odor, and so they're just following up. I mean, there, we've not had documented reports of it. We've had in the survey reports that there could be, but we cannot find that there's anything, a source for that. I mean, it can be other odors. It can be, you know, from outside. I mean, there could be anything that would cause people to think they smell something. So we're not questioning that they thought they smelled something, but we don't have any indication it has to do with any of the issues we're addressing. But that's why we're doing some of these follow-up checks, to make sure that we don't have another source.
So when I read it, it sounded like they were smelling the same thing, is that?
That's what was reported.
Right. Okay.
But as we know from our spring experience, there's a lot of things that smell like that, too. And we do have still a cooking kitchen in that building. I'm not blaming it. I'm just saying that it's an odor of something. I'm not questioning that they reported something they thought they smelled.
So I have a question about the Ideal Day as well. So I think originally we were going to look at this in December. Now we're talking about January. And that's so you could accommodate the listening circle information?
Well, I think it's just partly the work of the committee to give them adequate time. The other is our meeting schedule is not very conducive to that in December, meaning our meeting schedule, because we have one last business meeting and we have a work session that's already very identified that we're going to have our legislators join us. So it was really just looking at probably, give us a little more time. This is pretty disrupted time right now with Thanksgiving break week and then winter break. So I think that just, that way we'll be sure we'll be ready. So I think I will receive them probably before winter break, and then we can get them to the board, and then we'll have a work session the third Tuesday of January, is what we're tentatively planning.
So can you remind me again the timing of this? I know you're looking for implementation in 2016, '17.
Correct.
So in order to get the whole machine moving in the direction that we would all like, when would we have to make a decision about this? When would be the last point we could make a decision?
Well, this will be just my opinion, because I, there might be others in this room that have worked closely with this, would have different opinions. I just think, well, it depends on the nature of the change, and we've talked about that some of this could be phased in over time. So I think the question I would ask is how impactful is the decision, whatever the decision is or decisions, will be on families, on students, on personnel, and if we can make it in a timely enough manner that we can manage that impact? So the example I gave last time, I think, is at some point, if we're going to proceed with rerouting of our bus system to accommodate different start times, and it could affect, you know, pickup point, I mean, it's rebuilding the whole system. And they've done versions on it. It's not like they start from scratch, but, so I want to give our personnel time to do that. If it changes the start time, I would want families to know that well in advance, if it affects either earlier in the day or later in the day. So I think, and if it affects, we don't generally assign all of our staff until later in the spring, so we've got a little flexibility there. I think it's probably, for me, it's more about the transportation system and communicating with families, so that if we adjust and they have to change their daycare schedule or whatever because of a different start time, what we know is if we get much past spring break, I'll just say, that I think that's, could be problematic, both for us internally as well as for families. We certainly, if we get into April and May, I think it's just not really fair to families. So that's kind of our general guidance. And to get there, Shelley, we just thought we probably needed to be well down the path by January. So the sooner the better.
The decision around music education, then, isn't necessarily the one that will determine when this has to be finalized?
No, actually, that's probably one we have the most flexibility with. So, and might be one that gets phased if it happens at all. There's been several versions since we talked last of different scenarios, but, yeah. So I think the length of the day in the elementary and the potential late start for all schools for professional learning time, and the late start for high school every day are probably, I mean, those are kind of the big nuggets that really are pretty impactful, and we probably can't do the recess, probably can't do the lunch unless we get the day longer in the elementary. So there's some that we have more flexibility with with others, but I think it's those big ones that really move the boundaries of the day that affect transportation and families and childcare and lots of other things that I want to just be proactive with.
Okay. Thanks.
And some scheduling that would occur internally with that as well, beyond just the music education piece.
Tom.
Yeah.
Sure.
Just a question about the Ideal School Day, the listing group. Could you tell me again, I missed the who and how many and how they were selected, part of that listing group?
So I think it was 13, Tom, that we had, 13 stakeholders, which my notes indicate. And so, and the groups represented were parents, classroom teachers, specialist teachers, which could be art, music, physical education, and some central office staff who have been working closely with this that would have program expertise. So we really tried to identify folks that we've been in conversation with would have diverse points of view on this. So I think Ann Cooper participated. So Ann has been one who has talked, or she was there because of the whole lunchtime, because an adequate time for the children to eat their lunch. So we tried to bring people who would offer perspectives, classroom teachers, how schedules perspectives, classroom teachers, how schedules affect their lives, music specialists, how changes might affect theirs, so we really tried to get a rich mixture of differing points of view, Tom. So, some of them were folks we've heard from, some were folks that have been active, not necessarily on this committee, but have been active in some of this work over time. It was, it was intended to be as diverse a group as we could find, I mean, you know, within reason, so, yeah. And who selected them, I think I would give credit mostly, I mean, several people probably had voiced in it, but, you know, our leadership, Lynn Jackson and Sandy Riplinger were primarily responsible, Tina Mew and Shelley Langruff, others had input, Roy Holloway, really just trying to make sure we get a representative point of view in the room. We did not have any of us involved who were, you know, in a senior leadership position, really just to help get the, the circle organized and so it would, folks could listen to, and really the purpose was to, I would say, so folks could listen to each other, which is a good thing, we know, and also for members of the task force to, to listen to differing points of view, so they could incorporate that in their consideration as well.
Can I ask a question about the Lauren, just to follow up?
Let me just see. Tom, do you have, is that there? Tom?
Yes, thank you.
So, I was just gonna say, did you find any, and we've had hundreds, if not thousands, of points of view on this?
Yeah.
So, did you find anything different in the listening circle than what we've heard from our constituents?
Different?
Different perspective?
Probably not different, Shelley, only in that, I mean, we've heard a lot of points of view, so to know exactly different, but I think there were different points of view expressed, but not different, I think your question was different from what we've heard, and I think because we've received folks, all points of view on this, all points of view, and some more on some points of view, but you've read all those notes I've read, we've gotten points, our community has different perspectives on this, and I would say our listening circle probably reflected that as well.
I was just wondering if there's any reason for us to get the data from those circles, or have we pretty much covered it, any emails that we've had?
I think that you've probably have received a sense of what folks, a representative sense of folks, and what part of, we have not finalized exactly what the format will look like when these recommendations come forward, but I think some of what, if there's a, whatever the recommendation is, there'll be some rationale as to why that's included and maybe some considerations, pros and cons or whatever, however we might package that, and we aren't gonna try to capture dozens and dozens of emails, obviously, but there's some real common themes that you're hearing on multiple sides of this issue that we'll try to capture in our, and then you'll be the judge of whether we captured them well or not, because you've read them all, many of them, so I don't think notably different, no.
Jenny?
Yes.
Jenny?
Shelley, yeah, okay. So, I'd like to congratulate you on the Superintendent of the Year, and one of the things I enjoyed hearing was your concern for all of the students in our state, I think that's real important and I think that, and, and I'd like to also thank you for the work you've done in bringing the diverse school districts, our leadership of our school districts together to speak with one voice of the legislature. I have a friend who spent her life and her parents spent their lives in public education, and she used to say that in public education, we all circle the wagons and fire inwards, and I think that you've done a really good job of seeing that that stop, doesn't happen at least when we go to the legislature, and I think that's going to continue to be very important this year because fifty million dollars in cuts to public education means, I did the math a little bit, that's one and a half million dollars in cuts we'll, we'll need to find next year in our own district, and I'm not aware of a hundred million, one and a half million dollars of play in our budget, so I'm real concerned about that and, and I'd like to thank you for your leadership on that issue because I know that we'd be in much worse shape if, if you hadn't taken that, that role and if the superintendents hadn't taken that role a couple of years ago. And then I'd like to ask, so, the Student Advisory Committee is meeting again, I think that's really good news, are, are the high school students gonna be at Casby?
They are, we have a delegation coming to Casby, and Dr. Schaefer and Michelle Deverie will accompany them as their chaperones, and we have scheduled a breakfast meeting with the Board and senior administrators that will be at Casby, and also the students, so we did that a couple of years ago, I think, on the terrace, so, it'll give us a chance to have good conversation with them and enjoy a good breakfast together, so they will be good.
So, how many, how many kids, and are all the high schools represented?
All the high schools are represented, they're not all going to the conference, I think there's a limit to how many we can take in people's schedules and things, but we have a, a good group going, but in the big group, we have representation from all high schools, multiple folks, it's a good group, and they're still forming and norming, and they refreshed this year, because they started last year, then we refreshed this year, so, yeah, it's a great group, and we have a middle school group going as well.
Okay, so when we've, when we've had these groups, and I think it's kind of exciting to have middle school, we've never had that before as well, and, so they'll be at Casby as well?
No, just the high school age students.
So, so then, when, when we've had these groups in the past, they've occasionally reported to the Board, or we've had Board members visit their meetings, and I wonder if there's any talk about?
We had a work session with them last spring, you might recall.
No, I was, I was.
Oh, that's right, you took a little break last spring, yeah, so we had a work session last spring, and we will have another one, we will look at that format and say, did that work, is there a different format, so I'd say we're still kinda trying to figure out what works for students and see what will work for you, but yes, we did have a session last spring, we at least do that, and we may do more, and, and we'll have the opportunity at Casby, which we didn't have last year because they were just newly formed then, so.
Okay, well, great.
That might also be something that we might talk about in a retreat, the newly constituted Board.
Great.
Yes, that's true, that's true. And then I'd like to also, it's not really, it's another thing that's not exactly a question, but I'm really glad that we're going to be taking a look at air quality in all of our schools because I know that that's, we've heard more from Casey, but I, but my guess is, and my, actually my certainty is, that we have issues in all of our schools, at least from time to time, sometimes worse than others in some schools, and it would just amaze me if some of our older buildings didn't have circulation issues and, so, and it occurs to me as I looked through the data and some of the symptoms and some, heard some of the conversation about Casey last year, that a lot of the problem we have is just that the buildings are stuffy and that makes people tired and sluggish and you just feel bad, and so, and I, I'm certain that's a problem in a lot of our schools, so I'm really glad we're, we're gonna be tackling that, and I assume that's, you said, part of the bond?
Yeah, so, the goal is to initiate this on January 1, 16, coming up, and that the other part of this plan is that we would collect baseline data on all schools before we start, so phase one schools, the eighteen before we, well, some are brand new schools, but before we start construction, and then prior to all the, I mean, we'll get through all of them, but we wanna get in front of the construction on the phase one schools so we have good baseline data, so if there are clearly needs, we make sure we target those, but also we do post analysis as well, and then there would be an advisory committee that'd be over the whole district that would work not only during this two-year window, two-year period, but also ongoing, so, but initially getting the baseline data, and some of this is around mechanical systems and some of it's around things that we do as human beings, that, you know, either, just like energy consumption, that we either help our cause or we hurt our cause, and so some of it's around education and that work as well, but it's, this is a methodology that's been used lots of places with success.
So, the baseline data, that doesn't mean, does that mean air quality monitoring and symptom surveys?
Does mean air quality testing, yes.
It does in all of our schools, we'll be doing that?
Eventually, yes.
And will we, will we be doing something like the symptom surveys as well, or?
I, I don't know that we would do a, I don't know that, I, I think we'll collect information, but there would be the air quality testing and then some work with each of the faculty, and then a reporting mechanism, that's one of the areas we want to target as well.
Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Tina?
I forgot, this is not related to any of the comments, but I noticed two of the regulations changed, one is on the testing for gifted students, and is there any way that I could get a copy of that regulation before it was changed, because I don't know what's to compare?
Oh, sure.
Okay, because that's not uncommon to hear from parents of gifted students or to ask about gifted student testing, and the other one is, are we going to do any kind of communication around the change in the open enrollment priority for peak to peak, because the change is somewhat subtle in J E C C R, and I'm just wondering if we should call it out, just since we're sort of entering into the open enrollment period?
So, I'm, I, I'll need to follow up to you, I'm assuming that peak to peak would communicate that with their community as they have, I mean, they will, so I can check on that to see, I mean, it's, I'm not sure how the differences between the charters were communicated to, to which community, but clearly it will be utilized under the new, the new criteria that was established through the contract, so, you know, I would guess folks who were once eligible who won't be as eligible will, I mean, I don't know if peak to peaks informed them of that or not.
No, because the enrollment still goes through our open enrollment office, so the form-
They apply the criteria.
Could highlight that that has changed or, because I thought there might also be an opportunity to highlight, just to reaffirm, there is some confusion, I think that if you're in a bilingual school, you would get into a bilingual middle school, but that's not how that works, and, you know, if you're in X, Y, Z middle school, you're not more likely to get into a certain high school, and just clarifying that so we can set expectations with our community.
Okay, okay, I'll make sure that's being communicated.
I have one comment, congratulations on the award.
Oh, thank you.
That's a, a short statement because we have a lot of people here with public participation, and so the next item on our agenda is public participation, and I understand, and I can see, that there are many students who are here, and, and I also understand there are a couple of people who need to leave by seven, am I looking at you, Janice Flahos, and saying that?
Actually, I can wait like now.
Was that a yes?
I'm waiting for a rehearsal.
Now, well, how about if you come on up? We, we may know where you're going, that Janice Flahos is the Director of Guys and Dolls over at Fairview, this week, yeah.
The light at the end of the tunnel, right?
Thank you.
So, I am, I'm Janice Flahos and I'm the Choir Director at Fairview High School, and I am a native of Boulder, and I am also a product of the Boulder Valley School Districts. I've been a vocal music teacher for 21 years, and this is my 11th year at Fairview High School as the Choral, one of the Choral Directors and the Department Chair. I am also the proud parent of two students that are members, or students in BVSD. Over the last 11 years at Fairview, I have had a choir at the National American Choral Directors Association, one of only two choirs that have ever been from the state of Colorado. I direct the only vocal jazz group in Colorado that has won a Downbeat Award, we have performed at the Colorado Music Educators Conference seven times, we've been a Grammy Signature semifinalist for the last two years, and last year we received seven Bobby G nominations, and Bobby G is an award show that features outstanding high school musicals. And this did not happen by accident, this happened because we're part of a system, a K through 12 system that my kids have been a part of, and I saw that on stage today when I watched Guys and Dolls, and over eighty percent of our students started in the fifth grade level, being involved in their school musical, and they had the opportunity to be leaders at the fifth grade. Every year at the Colorado Music Educators Association, I'm sad when I hear choir directors around the state talk about cuts to their program and how dismal it's becoming, and I am always so proud of Boulder Valley because I think we're one of the only districts that has held on to allowing kids to take both at the fifth grade level, and it's not by accident that we have the excellence that we have at Fairview. I'd like to say that I'm part of that, and I'm proud to be part of that, but I'm proud because of Mesa, Bear Creek, Summit, all the schools that feed that, and I know that my coworkers, I know that people feel the same way at their high schools. I guess the biggest thing that confuses me is why are we making the change? Because we did not hear any outcry from parents before the ideal school day recommendations started to come out, oh, I'm also speaking for Kelly Fannell, we didn't hear any outcry from parents before, but we certainly are hearing a lot of outcry now. So, I'm asking you, why would we ruin something that is obviously working so very, very well? We have continued to be a strong program in the state, and are you telling us that a task force has the authority to change curriculum? And why is that? Because I can tell you that general music curriculum and instrumental music curriculum are two very, very different things, so I'd like you to really hear us as teachers, because I know that I have never been asked about this, and when I walked into the meeting in August, I was shocked and surprised when I heard that this was being considered. So, thank you guys so much for your time and all of your effort and energy with this.
I, I neglected, I neglected at the beginning of this to read a statement about public participation, but I knew that Janice needed to leave, Sandy had mentioned that. The Board recognizes the value of public comment on issues related to the operation of the schools. To ensure that our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask the persons who address the Board, confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. Speakers on agenda items will be heard first, followed by those speaking to non-agenda items. Limit your presentation to two minutes, if we go over the first hour, public comment will continue at the end of the meeting. We have thirty people signed up, just FYI. Recognize that students often attend or view our meetings, speakers' remarks therefore should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. The Board President may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement that is unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K-12 students. There's a lighting system on the podium, it starts at green when your two-minute starts, it turns yellow when you have thirty seconds remaining, and it turns red at the end. When the light turns red, please wrap up your comments so that we can hear from the maximum number of speakers, as I said, we have about thirty people signed up. So, let's invite students who might want to be able to go home and do homework, and just because it, it could be late if we, or if there's anyone else who absolutely has to leave early. Are there any students who have signed up? Please come forward and tell me your name.
You go first.
Okay. Welcome, hi.
Hi, welcome. Superintendent Messinger, BVSD School Board and members of the community. My name is Grace McNutt and I'm a junior at Centaurus High School. I'm a member of the Centaurus High School Band and have been for four years, starting in eighth grade. I was a member of Band in Platt Middle School and I started in fifth grade at Douglas Elementary. In the Centaurus Band, I've achieved the reward of winning four state titles consecutively. I've earned leadership roles in the band and I've learned that I have a family in my band and honestly, I don't know what I'd do without them. I have also learned tons of leadership skills, where I've learned communication and time management, so much time management, because I was able to take fifth grade general and instrumental music, not only do I have a heart for my instrument in band, but as well as a heart for vocal performance in my choir. In middle school, I was able to participate in both choir and band, which is kinda hard for a middle school student, and I currently am in the top audition choir at Centaurus, and I'm taking the IB Music course and interested in pursuing a career in vocal performance. There are kids who may not choose instrumental music if their choices are limited and thus reducing their options in the future. I fear that if you take away the ability for kids to take both fifth grade general music and instrumental music, kids in the future will not get to have the opportunity that I've had in BVSD. I remember the day that I got to choose my flute on, in fifth grade, and I remember walking into the lunchroom and seeing all these instruments and being so overwhelmed, but then it just clicked and I've loved it ever since, so thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. The next speaker is, hi, welcome.
Hi, my name is Brendan Lutz, I'm a senior at Fairview under the direction of Janice Flahos who just spoke. I am in three of her, or two of her choirs, I've been, I've gone through the whole program all four years. I'm a lifelong participant in music, ever since elementary school I've participated in general education, music, vocal performance, as well as instrumental music. In element, in elementary school, I was a member of Spotlights, the Elementary School Extracurricular Choir, and the school band, I participated in the school musical, Blue and the Gray, performed with the Colorado Music Educators Association, had solos as well, and was one of the few males who really loved to perform music. There aren't a whole lot of guys who like to get up and sing and dance. In the department, I learned a whole lot of skills, just like the student who just came before me, a whole lot of time management, leadership, musical skills, social skills, the ability to talk to other teachers, so often music conflicts with academics and you have to learn how to be able to work with both, and I think as a, as a, as a whole, I've grown as a lot as a person through the music program, and music has really integrated itself into my life, and as someone who's, as a senior going into college, I'm looking to do dual, a dual major, one in music and one in engineering, but I owe all of these musical experiences to the foundations that were created in my elementary school music program. While it's true that I mostly participate in music performance and musicals, my ability to participate in both general music and instrumental music was essential to my musical education and for fostering my love of music. Not only would I be missing half of my musical education if I wasn't able to participate in instrumental music, but I will be missing some of those memorable moments of performing with a group of my peers, doing something that I truly love. I strongly urge you not to force young children to choose between the general and instrumental music, not only because you would be robbing them of some of the truly life-changing and unique experiences that I was able to receive from both courses, but also because you'd be closing a door to them that they may not even realize they wanted to go through. When I was in elementary school, I know that I wouldn't have chosen to go through the vocal performance, I would have gone through band, and I've truly found my niche in the choir department at Fairview, so I urge you to let, let students have their time to experiment in both before they have to choose one or the other. Thank you.
Thank you, Brendan. Are there other students? Thank you, welcome, hi.
Superintendent Messinger, BVSD School Board and members of the community. My name is Regina Capriccini and I'm a freshman at Centaurus High School. I am also a member of the Centaurus High School Marching Band, and that is, they're my second family and it feels great to just have them with you, and I know for a fact, if I didn't have to do, to play an instrument in elementary school, I would not have chosen that, and as a Latina in Colorado, I know people expect me to do other things and sometimes expect me to be a bad student. But I know for a fact, playing an instrument and being in marching band have been a great experience and have changed my life. And I know that if I wouldn't have done this, my path would've gone the wrong way. I started in marching band my eighth grade year when I went to Manhattan Middle School. I wasn't going down the right path seventh grade year, but then my eighth grade year when I joined the marching band, it was life-changing. It made me so happy, it changed everything, it made me wanna be more successful in life. And if, I feel like if that's taken away from the fifth graders, they're not gonna be able to experience this, and they're not gonna wanna take the classes in middle school, and it'll make us lose some students throughout the high school year. And it, I feel like just a bunch of students need to be able to experience this, because for me personally, as I said, it changed my life and it could change theirs. So I feel like a bunch of students need to experience this. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others, are there any other students who signed up to speak? Looks like there's some young people here, maybe? Okay. Welcome.
Good evening, members of the board and Superintendent, Superintendent Messinger. Uh, my name is Eric Ellis. I'm a senior at Boulder High School. I'm an active member of the, um, band department. Um, music has been a really pivotal part of my life going through the Boulder Valley Schools, and has steadily grown from one of my hobbies to my absolute greatest passion in life. Um, timid ten-year-old me would not have envisioned myself being the drum major in my high school. Um, shoot, I'm really nervous, I'm sorry.
All right, it's okay.
So, every year, students are forced to whittle down their choices before they necessarily have the experience to recognize how those choices are gonna affect them in the future. And I feel like elementary schools should really be a place where students should have access to opportunities and experiences and uncover what really makes them tick and what excites them. Um, picking up an instrument and committing to it is really hard, and it's really scary. And it's way beyond the comfort level of most elementary schoolers, I think, without some pushing. It's especially hard if you're brand new to instrumental music, and it's not like it gets any easier with time. It's more like a foreign language that needs to be started early when students' brains are still malleable. Uh, according to the Center of the Developing Child at Harvard University, children involved in music have heightened executive functioning, which is the function of the brain that allows us to plan, switch tasks quickly, and remember instructions. I've chosen to follow band. However, I've benefited enormously from my general music education in elementary school. I arranged and composed my first piece of music in my fifth grade general music class and have since gone on to arrange and perform music with my eighth grade band, the Boulder Highway Ensemble and the BHS Pep Band. Um, I lost my place. I really worry that changes to the fifth grade music program will weaken both instrumental music programs around the district and general music programs within the elementary schools. Many students won't have the necessary push to discover their talents or love for instrumental music when there's a safe and comfortable option and safe and comfortable teachers that they've known and grown up with. Why in a time when creativity is so highly valued, would we reduce the avenues of students to explore their creative outlets? So as a student whose life has been changed for the better by music education, I ask you not to diminish what has been such a positive experience for me and so many other musicians around the district. Music, to me, is all about passion and commitment and community, which are all universal lessons that can change the course of a young life. Thank you.
Any other students? Girls? Maybe? Okay. Welcome, hi. And your name?
Hi, I'm Mondi Sidin, and I'm currently an eighth grader at Centennial Middle School. I moved here in fifth grade from Oregon, and I started playing the viola in fourth grade. And I went through all of those Suzuki books and scales and soon found myself feeling attached to my instrument. Recently, I walked into my orchestra class and heard the news that the school board was wanting to cut the music camp program in half. My first thought was, why would they want to limit opportunities for students? I might not know all the facts, but from what I do know, I'll be sharing quick stories from starting back in fifth grade. There was, in fifth grade, here I saw that you were required to choose an instrument to play, and then there was also another class where we, you would go to play piano, sing, drum, and have fun. Uh, there were different, there were different vibes that you got from each pieces, so, which was really nice. In orchestra, I got to sit down and learn from others around me also. Then, in sixth, moving into sixth grade, I saw that amazing talented students were sticking to their instruments. In seventh grade, I saw those students improve to much, um, improve so much over the, over time. Going from scales to three-page pieces was astounding. In sixth grade, I played in the seventh grade orchestra, and in seventh grade, I played in the eighth grade orchestra. So I watched all my friends play at their concerts through the years. As all of the pe, as all of the people I knew played up on that stage, I cheered them on in my seat, in the seat, along with the many other proud supporters. The main thing that crushes me was that, the thought that, what if it was, the main thought was that, what if we had to choose orchestra against general music class? For those who might've chosen the general music class, it would've affected lives quite a bit. I might've not met some of my closest friends, they wouldn't have had that extra push to learn a whole new beautiful world of music. To have the power to hand a student an instrument and watch them grow rapidly with a talent they might've not known they ever had is a really scary thought. So, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have some students right here in front? Come on up, girls.
I am currently a fifth grader at Mesa Elementary, and I would not have chosen instrumental music if I had had the choice. And instrumental music has been very, I've gotten to be closer to my friends, and I've learned a lot of new stuff, which I think is pretty cool. And if you change that and take it away, kids won't have the opportunity to become something great. Some kid might stay with instrumental music for a long time, then they might become someone big, and it might change their life forever. Or they might stay with regular music for a while, and they become someone big in that category. I think that, um, having both is very important, and if you let them choose, I know that kids at my school, um, regular music would definitely have been outnumbered. And, yeah, so, if you were going to, say that you were, um, a kid my age, and you had to choose, and, and say the thing that you wanted, it didn't have enough people, so it was cut, then you didn't have what you wanted, but you had something else. I think that it's great that you have both, and I think you should keep it that way. I play clarinet, and I think it's great that we have a wide variety of options to choose from. Um, so, thank you very much.
Hello, I am Sarah Shehegan. Like my friend Nora said, I feel music is very important, because if you don't give everyone that chance, not everyone will choose the one they might, um, bloom in, and this year, I am really enjoying general music, and I've been able to try the French horn as well, which I am very much enjoying. I believe you should not make future fifth graders choose between instrumental and general music, because what good will come out of that? And they both fall under the same category in music, and learning one without learning the other is like learning math without learning fractions. And plus, music provides a good break from normal academic things, to be with your, all of your friends, and to get social experience with all of your peers, and to have all that experience, and to be able to do that. And it's important to a lot of kids. And you also don't know if you'll excel at something until you try it, so why not try it? I mean, and if you're not given the chance and you're not encouraged to do it, why would you do it? So I hope you will make the decision to let future fifth graders to do both, um, instrumental music and general music. Thank you for letting me talk.
Are there other students? Hi, welcome. And please tell us your name.
Uh, my name is Ryan O'Rourke. I'm a student in the Wind Ensemble at Boulder High School, and, uh, I play trumpet in the Pep Band. Uh, when I heard that the school board was considering, uh, rearranging the school day for fifth graders and no longer requiring instrumental music, I was, uh, very concerned. I wasn't necessarily willing to participate in the fifth grade music program, but once I did, I, I came completely involved in music. The instrumental music programs allow kids to find a forte in music, and they, they allow kids to find a new love, like I did. Uh, for me, right now, life would be very different without music. Almost all my friends are in music, I, and every day, I go and I eat in the band hall, thanks to our great band teacher, Mr. Bryson. Band, also, it allows a break in the long and tedious school days full of tests and hard work. Once you start playing an instrument, you get so involved and you just flow into the music, and you forget about your test next period or the essay you have fifth, and you can release yourself through your instrument. And you realize that you're part of this great community where everybody's accepting and nobody judges you based on how good you are, but that you play based on, your, your sound is based on your hard work. So, when I sit down and I pick up my trumpet and I start, um, playing on it, it's not just music that comes from my bell. No, it's, it's much more, and same with every kid in fifth grade and sixth grade and seventh grade and eighth grade, and all the grades everywhere. It's persistence and determination in practice, collaboration with your peers, and auditory skills and visual skills, reading and listening to music and matching pitches. It's hard work and problem-solving, and most of all, it's the sound of emotion and happiness. There's not a day where I walk out of that band hall disappointed or sad because we didn't sound good, because it doesn't matter how good we sound, because life with music is so much better than life without it.
Are there any other students who would like to come speak? Welcome, hi. Can you get through the chairs? Come on up, hi.
Um, hey, so, uh, I'm not really gonna talk from a paper, uh, this time. I'm gonna talk about what a trumpet player likes to talk about most, myself. Um, uh, all I know is that, um, in fifth grade, I probably wouldn't have picked to play an instrument if it hadn't been, because in a way, I was forced to. I mean, I wasn't resisting, no one was, uh, holding me back or pushing me either, but, um, I wouldn't have done it if it wasn't for the fifth grade mandatory music program. Um, fifth grade through eighth grade, I had a lot of fun in music. I, uh, in middle school, one of my safe places per se, when I was a small sixth grader, was, um, in the, in the band room, where I knew I could trust my teacher, where I actually, uh, knew my teacher from fifth grade, but where I knew I could trust my teacher, where I knew, like my good friend Ryan said, it's a place where people don't judge you. Um, furthermore, when I moved to, um, high school, um, band was something that really helped me get, still helps me get through the day. Uh, this year, I have band fifth period, and it's like, I have one of my hardest classes, AP World History, uh, fourth period. I go to band, I can just relax, be happy, uh, take a break from sticking my nose in my books, but, um, and also, I've made some of the best friends possibly I will ever make in band. Um, in the band trip this last ye, uh, the last year, excuse me, I, I, I made some of my best friends that are actually in the crowd, Ryan and Lily. Uh, nevertheless, um, I, I also made friends that, as a freshman, I wouldn't have made. I, as a freshman, made friends with a lot of band seniors, a lot of band juniors, and I just think it's a great experience and really helpful for, to create new friendships. Thank you very much.
Before you sit down, tell me your name, please?
Uh, Fernando Hearn.
Okay. Are there any other students who would like to speak? All right, we'll start with the adults then. Um, are there any adults who needed to leave? I, have we, Sandy, did we, was there just one person?
There's one more, the others that need to leave.
Okay.
Do you need to leave?
I do.
And if you tell us your name, please.
I'm Diane Elliston. I live in South Boulder, two nine seven five Juilliard Street, and I have to leave to pick up a huge carpool of kids. Members of the board, Superintendent Messinger, I would like to speak on behalf of my children concerning the music program proposal and equity in the schools. And congratulations, by the way. My husband and I have three children currently attending Boulder schools, a seventh grader at Southern Hills and two fourth graders at Mesa Elementary, an exceptional school where, with a diverse student body that includes kids who have learning and behavioral challenges, along with the other student population. My husband and I moved to Boulder in search of a well-rounded education and a more accessible childhood for our children. We have thoroughly embraced the community and the schools, and their offering are a large part of what we appreciate. I know that we have all discussed the benefits of having music and art in the schools, as well as enough time for kids to relax at lunch and get exercise outside. All of these elements make up a successful day for kids. Given the proposed change, many parents are asking the following questions. Who authorized the study of the ideal day, and what were the parameters established upfront? I've read the list of participants on the BVSD site. I recognize only one teacher on the list, and he is a middle school teacher, not a music teacher, not an elementary-level teacher. These decisions, however, directly affect our elementary-school-age kids, not so much the middle school, although it will affect them later on down the line. Why would the district want to take away programs from schools if they're working well? Do we not strive for well-rounded students and excellence in Boulder? Are we trying to make every school the same without any unique traits? Are we agreeing to reduce the opportunities for our children so that only people who can afford private instruction have access to robust music programs and education? The proposal at hand feels disingenuous. If we allow it to go forward, it will cause anxiety and tension as specific teachers try to keep their classes full in order to justify their positions. It will breed elitism among children who will have access to both instrumental and vocal music, and those who cannot afford the activities outside of school. If the goal is to create equity among schools across BVSD, shouldn't we be focusing on increasing the offerings in those schools that currently lag behind rather than cut programs in schools where they are thriving? Why would we want to take a step backwards and reduce the programs in schools where they currently exist? We at Mesa offer both vocal and instrumental music in fifth grade. It is a rite of passage for our fifth graders to take part in the Spring Musical, all students, not just those who are naturally vocally talented and motivated to be on stage. The kids who are shy or nervous about speaking in front of an audience grow tremendously from this challenge, and all of their classmates support them. My son was one such kid. He was terrified to act in the musical, and we talked a lot about it. He was cast in perfect roles that played to his strengths. Afterwards, he told me he was sad that it was over and that he really loved it. Will he be the next Matthew Broderick? Probably not, but he grew tremendously from that experience and was very proud of himself. He's also in the audition band at Southern Hills now, and he plays the drums. We should strive as a community to give the students of Boulder the same experience the kids at Mesa have enjoyed since long before the board took office. the kids at Mesa have enjoyed since long before the board took office. Mesa Elementary offers both vocal and instrumental music to fifth graders, not either-or, and the benefits from offering both far outweigh a longer lunch period, in my personal opinion. An additional five minutes of lunch is not going to improve my children's lives, but keeping our music program intact will. I challenge the board to reexamine this proposal, and rather than cut musical programs at schools like Mesa and Douglas and the other elementary schools that offer both, to offer these programs at schools where they do not currently exist. Let us lead the way in creating a district that takes music and art seriously enough to put its money where its mouth is. The board has not given carte blanche to make arbitrary decisions and experiment on our kids. As elected officials, it is your responsibility to represent your communities, and this proposal is not representative of my community nor many others in the district, I'm sorry to say. But thank you for listening and for your time.
Thank you for coming. So our next two speakers, the first is Joanna Seiden, and the second is Virginia Gebhardt. So Joanna, hi, welcome.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi, I'm Joanna Seiden, and I'm the mother of Laundy, who is an eighth grader at Centennial Middle School. I'm a resident of North Boulder. We moved to Boulder from Oregon the summer following Laundy's fourth grade year. One of the first things I asked at Crestview Elementary when we visited was about an instrumental program for the fifth graders since she had been in a public school orchestra program for a year. If there had been no elementary instrumental program, I would have considered other educational options for my daughter. Every student the district loses this way costs $6,900 per pupil. I made sure my children had an early music education. However, many parents don't have that time, means, or inclination. A requirement of instrumental music in fifth grade will guarantee that education to all of Boulder's publicly educated students. It will ensure that no musically gifted student will ever be missed, but the loss of this simple requirement will lead to the decimation of excellent orchestra and band programs in our middle and high schools because fewer young musicians will be identified and encouraged. You know, there are some students who will never be on a sports team, but some of these same students will learn team skills in a school band and orchestra. You've heard them talking tonight. They've talked about their friends, they've talked about a team, that's what they're talking about, not just friends. They're talking about team building, and that's not something that you're gonna get unless you're in sports or unless you're on a team, like orchestra or band. I've been a public school parent for 20 years now, and in that time, I've noticed something really important. Once a program's cut, it is never reinstated, not once has it ever happened. Please don't cut music in Boulder schools.
Thank you.
Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Virginia Gebhardt, and then the next two speakers will be John Gunther and Sarah King. Welcome, Virginia.
Thank you.
Hi.
I'm Virginia Gebhardt. I'm a past president of the Fairview Band Boosters Organization. I'm wondering why district officials speak and write about this issue of the music choice model for fifth graders as if it's no big deal, no big change to the music education in this district, as if it doesn't matter. My sons are in their twenties now. When they were in fifth grade at Douglas, they received excellent instruction from both Tula Robarge and Pete Lewis. This was a great start for their music education. Now district officials are suggesting that it's appropriate to force fifth graders to choose only general or instrumental music, as if it doesn't matter to students, parents, and teachers that fifth graders' music education instruction will be cut. I'm here to say it does matter. It matters to students who will choose general music and lose out the opportunity to start an instrument in fifth grade and may never have the confidence or opportunity to start an instrument later. It matters to parents who worry that if their children don't start an instrument in fifth grade, they will never start. It matters to parents who will see their children move into much smaller music programs in middle and high school, being robbed of the chance to participate in the wildly successful programs available across the district now. It matters to music teachers in elementary through high school. They know that the numbers of participants in their programs will collapse within a few years. It matters to Rosa Medina from Lafayette, who left a comment when she signed our online petition. She said, "Music is so important for our kids, and not everyone can afford lessons." It matters because music education is about music and so much more. Thanks.
Thank you. John Gunther, followed by Sarah King. And John, you have four minutes.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Good evening, Dr. Messinger and esteemed members of the board. My name is John Gunther. I'm an associate professor and director of the Thompson Jazz Studies Program at the University of Colorado Boulder, where I have taught for 11 years. I play the saxophone, the clarinet, the flute, the piano. I have a PhD in music performance and composition from New York University, and I started instrumental music in third grade in the Aurora Public School system. I live in Boulder, I have two children in BVSD, and my wife is a high school band director in the St. Crane School District. Needless to say, we stay up late talking about music every night. I'm here to comment on music choice, and I'd like to read from one of two letters I'm delivering on behalf of the College of Music. In challenging economic and political times, the arts curriculum is often the first to be cut back. Many leaders in education and politics make the point that STEM academic disciplines have the greatest impact on preparing students for the workforce of tomorrow, and that multidisciplinary integration of these subjects leads to innovation. No doubt STEM training can and does lead to innovation, but after countless studies have proved the overwhelming value of music education, we also know that the very skills gained by musical study provide precisely the tools needed to adapt and thrive in a rapidly changing world. Indeed, leaders in science and industry, from Albert Einstein to Steve Jobs, have commented how important background in the arts and humanities in music is to creating the leaders and workers of tomorrow. Students trained in music develop listening skills, math skills, self-reliance, creativity, stick-to-it-ness, all of these things that you've heard from these wonderful students tonight. If all these qualities are not the very things that we need to adapt in a rapidly changing world, then I'm not sure what is. As many of you know, there is, across the country, in many districts and school programs, a reframing of STEM to STEAM, adding the arts to the other disciplines. How wonderful it would be if BVSD would help lead the way with more robust music offerings over K through 12 years. We note with interest the most recent Thrive newsletter, Dr. Messinger's November 2nd email, which focuses on the benefits of developing healthy social relationships, and also has a section from the YMCA about putting down your devices. We know that taking part in music does wonders for those hoping to develop healthy social relationships and to stay engaged in deep learning without a device in hand. Our faculty has a close connection to pre-college K-12 schools throughout the state. We are concerned with the decline of the quality of in-state students wishing to pursue musical studies at the collegiate level, whether as music majors or as double majors. We would urge an inclusive review of the music programs in which all general music and instrumental music teachers come together at some point with other interested parties. Such a review would help nurture the climate for our students and the future of music in BVSD. Limiting choices in fifth grade program is not only a fifth grade issue, rather, it is a problem that ripples outwards and onwards, affecting all those in our district and the very health of our interconnected lives overall for years to come. As the committee and board continue to deliberate this important issue, on behalf of the College of Music faculty, I'd like to offer our expertise, as they continue to make those decisions, to have resources for decisions that can be made on fact-based and referenced research. In closing, I'd like to share a few personal experiences as a teacher and a musician. I've witnessed again and again how music has provided the link for a young person to connect with his or her peers and teachers, and thereby facilitating learning in all subject areas. Playing an instrument becomes their anchor in a sometimes chaotic and confusing world. I've also witnessed how, after fifth grade, when a student has entered middle school, a window of opportunity has closed. A student may feel less adventurous, more self-conscious, more overscheduled, and less likely to start. And finally, I'd like to pose the question, haven't we cut music and arts enough? Are there any studies showing the detriment of having too much music education? I ask the board of Dr. Messinger to preserve fifth grade instrumental music and to fight to preserve this very important aspect of a child's education. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sarah King, I'm a parent of two BVSD students and chair of the Boulder High School Instrumental Music Parents Association. And I was gonna invite everybody in the room who is opposed to any cuts to music education to stand up, however, I think we all know that the room is packed because nobody wants any cuts to music education. I'm here to call the board's attention to and Dr. Messinger's attention to our support from parents, students, music educators, alumni, grandparents, et cetera, from across BVSD and across the country. We have over 2,000 signers on our petition, on our online petition, and hundreds of meaningful comments on the online petition. I encourage you to look at those. We have over 200 on the old-school paper petitions. There have been several letters to the editor, one guest opinion, all opposed to any cuts to music education. I haven't heard a single person saying, "Let's cut music education." So, that's it. Thank you very much. And who can I give the paper petitions to? Sandy?
Give them to Sandy, please.
Thank you again.
Thank you for coming. Our next speaker is Nora Blair.
I think you were spoke already.
Sorry? Okay. Beth Williamson, followed by Michelle Wellington. But I'm not sure what the names of the girls were. I may have missed. Is Beth here? Nope. Okay. Michelle Wellington, followed by Jeff Olson. Hi, welcome.
Hello. My name is Michelle Wellington, and I am a parent of students at Southern Hills and Bear Creek Elementary. I thank you for your dedication to our schools, and I appreciate the chance to speak tonight. I want to start by noting that the Ideal School Day Committee has been given a very difficult task. There's enough diversity within our district that what may be ideal for one school may not be ideal for others. I hope that you'll carefully consider every recommendation presented to you. Please keep in mind that changing the start time of a school day may eliminate opportunities for before-school enrichment offerings. Weigh the benefits of late start or early release for collaboration time with the loss of the instruction time. Allow our schools the flexibility to meet the needs of their community. Also, I'm asking you to keep mandatory instrumental instruction. My seventh grader is what I like to call a first-generation musician. She didn't get it from me. She picked viola in fifth grade and continues to play at Southern Hills. Music has given her confidence and discipline and poise. Given the choice, my daughter would have opted out of instrumentals in fifth grade. She loved her general music teacher and would not have wanted to miss a year. No student should have to choose. Please say no to the music choice model. Fifth grade is the only, one and only year where BVSD's students have to engage in both. Please preserve it and treasure it, don't eliminate it. I've spoken with many parents and friends about the proposed changes. We appreciate that BVSD values and nurtures well-rounded students. We fear that implementing the music choice program would be a mistake we can't erase. We worry that standardizing every elementary school will leave no room for new ideas and innovation. We're not a special interest group. We're concerned parents who support education at the ballot box. It sounds like we have a big battle ahead of us to secure funding from our state. It would be great to get this out of the way so we can focus our attentions on bigger problems of keeping our schools solvent. Thank you for your time.
Our next speaker is Jeff Olson. And Jeff, you will have four minutes given to you by Ms. Olson. Great, welcome.
I don't know how I fill that up, but I'll do my best. First of all, thank you for letting me speak tonight. I'm not sure I've got anything here to say that should be more meaningful to you than what we've heard from the students here already tonight. Hopefully, what I have to say expands on that. I did read the document you mentioned online about the school day, or the ideal school day. You know, there was one part of that that I really did like, which was the idea of exposing our students to more art disciplines, however, not at the expense of instrumental music. And just a quick search on Google, I mean, endless examples references to the benefits of education, I'll give you just a couple, from the Texan Commission on Drug and Alcohol Abuse. Secondary students who participated in band or orchestra reported the lowest lifetime and current use of all substances of alcohol, tobacco, or drug use. Another very interesting statistic, the very best engineers and technical designers in Silicon Valley industry are, nearly without exception, practicing musicians. That from the Center of Arts Basic Curriculum in New York, 1989. And from the imagination, a paper published The Imagination Project at UCLA Graduate School of Education in 1999, students who report consistent high levels of involvement in instrumental music over the middle and high school years show significantly higher levels of mathematics proficiency by grade 12. This observation holds regardless of students' socioeconomic status. Music students perform better on SAT tests. Music majors are accepted to medical school at a rate of 66%. This is highest of any major. By comparison, biochemistry majors, only 44% make the same cut. If our goal is to enrich students and help them excel in these areas that we've identified as important, mathematics, linguistics, and humanities, then why would we throw out something that has been proven to help students excel in these very areas? In a wonderful TED Talk, an international educational advisor, Sir Ken Robinson, points out that we have the task of educating our children for a future that we simply cannot grasp. Children entering in the education system today will be retiring in the year 2065. We can't even imagine what the world's gonna look like in 2020, let alone 2065. For this point, he puts forth the idea that creativity is as important as literacy and should be treated as such. So, yeah, more art, yes, less instrumental, absolutely not. And I know that you guys have spent a lot of time studying this issue, and I would ask you that you go back and do some more work and study some more, look at some of these studies, take to heart what we've heard from these students tonight, and understand that cutting this music program is not gonna be in anybody's best interests, and it's not gonna help you achieve your goals of rising everything else. Music programs help us rise all boats. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Sienna Sewell. Hi, Sienna.
Hi. My name is Gwazira Gartner. I am a mom from Mesa Elementary School. I have two kiddies there, one daughter that's just started school and a son, fourth grade. First of all, I would like to thank you for your work, for all your hard work for the schools in Boulder. I feel very lucky and thankful that my kiddies are going to school now, and I'm sure that another parent will feel the same way. I have been here on the lesson meeting, and I'm here today, and I have listened to all the parents, all the teachers, and all the kiddies that come here to talk. And what we can see is the music program is doing great. I feel very proud to see all these kiddies. You know, they are great, they are awesome. And these kiddies are going out there, and they are going to be a difference in the world. So I ask you, please, 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 don't cut the music program. If you want, why change something that is doing so great already? So if you want to change something, we can work as a team. The students can give you some suggestions, the parents, the teachers, you know, but I ask you, please, please, don't change something. You know, the kiddies are talking to you, and they are putting their heart out. And so, please listen to them. Okay? Thank you.
I'm a little bit confused about all the names of everybody. Didn't quite, a little bit of out of order. Have we heard from Kelly Shanafelt? Is Kelly here? Hi, Kelly, thank you. Welcome. Thank you for coming this evening.
Yeah, well, I am a living, breathing product of the public music education system. I started viola in fourth grade in Boise, Idaho, and I'm so glad to hear the comments from kids, because it's just what I was gonna say, if I didn't have music, I would have If I didn't have music, I would have gotten into a lot of trouble when I was a kid. But I have played in professional orchestras for 29 years. I play in the Colorado Symphony, and I also teach violin and viola to kids. And my son plays cello also, and he started at Creekside. And you probably know Creekside is not a well-endowed school. I think half of the kids are eligible for free and reduced lunch program. But I was able to go in and help them in orchestra, and the kids just loved it so much. And there were nine boys playing viola, and when I was young, I didn't even know what a viola was, and they ran out of violins, and that's why I got stuck with a viola. But I said, "Why are all these boys playing?" And they said, "Well, there's this cartoon called Adventure Time, and the main character in there plays viola." So I thought, whatever it takes to get these kids playing. And so, I also was able to see Mr. Johnson in Manhattan School and see how the kids just adore him and how, at that age, they blossom, they find what they want to do. And now my son is at Fairview, so I'm helping Mindy Anderson. And she has brought to our attention how important it is for her to cultivate the kids in fifth grade at Bear Creek and Mesa, and then at Southern Hills, so that now she's got so many music students, she doesn't know what to do with them. She doesn't have enough cellos. And it's helping the kids just find their community. It helps their concentration. It helps them express themselves, which, as a parent of a teenager, I know is kind of difficult for boys. And I have a couple of young students. When they started, they had some severe concentration problems, and I kind of dreaded those lessons. But I've seen how they're able to focus on little details of music through playing an actual instrument, not just experimenting with a variety of things. And a year later, 14 months later, they're able to focus so much better. And I see tangibly the progress that music allows people and helps our brains develop. And another thing is I hear so many adults say, "Oh, I used to play an instrument as a kid, and my parents let me quit, and I'm so mad at my parents." So I wonder about the wisdom of letting kids decide in fifth grade if they're going to try an instrument or not. I almost think it should be mandatory because you never know when that seed is planted, where it's going to bloom. And I hope that every kid gets a chance to play an instrument because it's so valuable on the physical, the spiritual, the emotional levels.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Eric Ellis, who has four minutes given, two minutes given.
I suppose.
Okay, thank you. And then Jen Osborne gave minutes. Helen Olson has given minutes. Elizabeth Shahegan?
I gave my minutes, thank you.
Okay.
I think we're down to Mike at the very last.
Someone with the last name of Gartner?
I suppose.
That was you? Thank you. Okay. And sorry, I just didn't hear it all. And then Mike Lacritz? Mike?
Coach Lacritz.
Okay.
Hi, thanks to the board. I really appreciate the opportunity to get up here and talk. My name is Mike Lacritz. My family and I moved down to Boulder a year ago, primarily for the quality of the school district down here, and specifically, actually, to South Boulder because of what we call the music pipeline from Mesa to Southern Hills to Fairview. I've been a musician all my life. My mother might have argued otherwise in middle school, when I was playing Sex Pistols and Ramones in the basement with my band. But I have no doubt that my love of music was spurred from, starting in third grade, in a public school system in Madison, Wisconsin, where we were required to play strings, starting in third grade and through fourth grade, and then in fifth grade, we were required to play a different instrument or stick with strings. It sort of boggles my mind that we would create a music choice program. So I would propose that we create other choice programs for math. So for students for math, in fifth grade, they should choose between geometry and trigonometry. And for science, I think they should choose between biology or physics. And for literacy, maybe they should choose between reading or writing. Sound like a good idea? No, of course not. It's absurd. So why do we feel that this is okay for the arts? The arts are always getting short shrift, and they are the first programs to get cut, or first programs to get looked at to remove from school programs. And I really, can we dispense with these euphemistic names, music choice, ideal school day? These sound like things that Frank Luntz has been consulting on, to turn something that is inherently negative, taking away the opportunity for every student to have an opportunity to play an instrument and slapping some sort of name on it that makes it sound like it's a positive, "Well, we're going to give you choice." So I really would ask the board to look really hard, listen to these students. Some of those students welled up tears in my eyes, listening to them, talk about how meaningful music has been to them. I am blown away by other things in this school district that we have discovered since moving down here from the mountains, thinking like, wow, what an affluent community, and how is this school district having the PTO, having to raise $100,000 for this, that? So please, please look at this and do not take away the opportunity for every student to have an instrumental education in fifth grade. Thank you.
Well, that concludes our public participation and public hearing, and it was just under an hour, so we have about another four minutes left of it. Otherwise, we would have rolled it over into the later part of the evening. The next item on our agenda is board communication. And sometimes board members speak about what we've just heard, if you wanted to listen. Jim?
So the general comment, thank everybody for coming out tonight. There were several mentions of data in several of the presentations, and I would invite anybody who's still listening or tell the people, "Please send me that study. I would love to review them in greater detail." Ken Robert is here, former board president, former board member. Both, we're both engineers, as is Tom, and, you know, while I'm not much of a musician, I know Ken is, but we smiled at each other when the mention came up of the engineering and music aspects. So I'd like to turn it from that to a different thing and congratulate Bruce again for your award. Well-deserved. It looks very nice right there. I would like to comment to the students who came out tonight that, you know, one thing I really saw is I really hope that some of them are future school board members because we sure do need you. So if it's music that keeps you involved in school, then, you know, let's keep that because we're going to need future leaders just like you. This is my last board meeting after eight years of board service. I'm going to keep it short because it's late. I have enjoyed my years. I have enjoyed the friendships I've made. I still keep in touch with many of the old board members, and will be around for any of you if you still would like to have coffee on occasion. So it has been wonderful serving with you all as well. Thanks.
Jeez. I hadn't exactly expected that. Oh, my gosh. Yeah, it has been a long eight years. I mean, the great eight years. Board members. Tom?
Well, the last board meeting, I was overwhelmed and said that was one of the better board meetings I've ever been at. I was wrong. This is probably the best board meeting I've ever been at, to hear so many people come forward and speak, and students just overwhelmed me. You know, these students taking music, both general and instrumental music, at fifth grade, you would think that they were taking public speaking and persuasive speaking in the fifth grade. And some of them, even now in the first grade, I thought, we're going to have to lower that podium there because we're going to have students out here, I love it, that are in elementary, speaking to us so eloquently. I mean, that was amazing. So, thank you so much. We appreciate your comments. Come to more board meetings, please, and let us know how you feel about not only this, but all other items before the school district. You know, the organization of the school day is so very important to appropriately and in a way to maximize our instructional time. I personally believe that both general and instrumental music is important, and I support both of those in school districts, in our school district as we have in the past. So thank you again for coming.
Tina?
Yeah, thanks so much for coming and sharing your perspectives. And I just want to remind everyone that we don't have a proposal yet, so some people asked us to reconsider the proposal. We actually won't have one, and so, and we haven't seen any of the data that's been collected about the choice model pilots. So that's a, I feel a little bit at a disadvantage because we haven't even gotten into that discussion. But all of this comment is incredibly helpful and will give us a lot of good guidance as we consider the proposal that comes out in January from that task force. And then just, and I hate to go into something else, I just wanted to say a couple other things in the communication portion. One is, I just wanted to, there was an article about the one-to-one, the technology that came out in the Daily Camera, and we haven't, that the one-to-one would be K through 12, but we haven't discussed that as a board yet. And I just wanted to, just publicly comment that I haven't, I don't know enough about that one-to-one initiative yet, and I'm still coming up to speed with the benefits of that. And I also wanted to, I heard some wonderful feedback today about the transgender training that has been going on in the district, and a friend of mine who's a teacher just thought it was great. So I'm so glad the district is doing that and is doing a good job in helping make sure that we continue to be a district that's inclusive and supportive of all the different types of students that we serve and that we can serve them successfully. Thanks.
Shelley?
I think I said this the last time, that a group of people came out to discuss the instrumental music topic, that I am just so dismayed that my kids went to a charter school where they did not have fifth grade music.
It's not too late.
And it's not too late.
No.
He is learning banjo at 21, but it's not the same. So I just can't tell you how impressed I've been by the passion and the commitment and the knowledge of the people that have come and spoken about this incredibly important topic to them. And this is what we're here for. And I want to reiterate what Tina said, that we don't really know much about what the district's proposing right now. This is not a board proposal. We won't hear about this until January. And I want you to know that when I go into those discussions, that I have heard all of you. And I'm hoping very strongly that we'll be able to come out with a proposal that will be, that will consider what you have all said, because we have literally heard from thousands of people now. So I want to thank you very much, and I know that this has taken a lot of your time and energy to do this, and I don't certainly want to tell you to stop, but what I do want to say is that I think you've been heard. So thank you very much.
Jenny?
So first of all, I'll have coffee with you, Jim. I'll take you up on that. And then I'd also like to congratulate, I mean, we'll miss both Jim and Lori, who's also in her last full business meeting, although I think we have another short meeting at the beginning of December that I hope we'll see both of you at. And then I'd also like to congratulate the new board members who are sitting in the audience and will be taking seats at the table, Kathy Gebhardt and Richard Garcia, and Shelley, who will be returning for four more years. So congratulations, and thank you to all the citizens who voted, because school board, sometimes school board elections get overlooked, but what happens at the board level, as you all who are here tonight know, is really important. It affects the education of our kids, and what could be more important than that? And then, thanks for the, I'm really heartened to hear the support for the arts in this district. I am a big supporter of music, but other arts as well. I mean, for my kids, they weren't musicians so much as they were studio artists, not professional level, but those were the kinds of experiences that made a difference to them. But in fact, all of their teachers made huge differences to them. But I have a question, Bruce, about this. So I heard people indicating that instrumental music is required in fifth grade. Do we require instrumental music?
We have a couple things going on. In some schools, all students take instrumental music, and other schools, they are provided a choice. So I would say we have both going on.
So in schools where they, so there are schools that require both general and instrumental music, but not all of our schools do?
Correct. So 85% of all of our fifth-grade students this year are taking instrumental music. So 15% of the 2,400 are not taking instrumental music as a choice of their, them and their parents.
Okay, okay. I'm still a little confused. So I'm sure that the ideal school day will come forward with some rationale.
Which is the model we've had in place for quite a while, of choice.
Well, the choice, I know. It was the part.
It's just that not all schools follow that.
So some schools, because in the schools my kids went to, they, everybody took general music, and then they could take instrumental music, but they didn't have to take instrumental music, and that was the choice.
But some schools have chosen just to place them all in instrumental music.
Which in some way makes more sense to me, but...
Members of the audience, hold on.
So some schools, so if I'm correct on this, some schools require all fifth graders to take instrumental music.
They just schedule them into it.
They schedule them. And so they, all the fifth graders take instrumental music, and some schools, and some of the schools, they offer instrumental music, but they don't require it. So kids who don't take instrumental music, for example, may...
They stay in their fifth grade room.
Stay in their fifth grade room, and probably there's nothing programmed for them. They probably just...
I mean, there isn't an alternative beyond that. So that's 15% are not in instrumental music presently.
Okay, okay.
Just what you described is accurate, Jenny.
Okay, that's kind of concerning.
I would think parents probably don't know that, because I think they're just scheduled in.
Yeah.
So they, you know, so I would understand why parents wouldn't know that.
Okay, okay, yeah.
Part of that is because they didn't want to have four or five students not in a class, so they just went and scheduled them in. So we just have different things going on.
Right, right. So that, and you wouldn't know what was going, I mean, if your school did it one way, you wouldn't necessarily know that it was happening in a different way at a different school. Okay. And the model I was most familiar with was one where you could take instrumental music, and most kids did, but a few kids did not because it wasn't required. Okay. Then I would say that the other thing I'm concerned about that I'll just comment on is that we clearly have a very high-quality music program in South Boulder, but as a person who doesn't, you know, doesn't, that lives in Brimfield, I'd like to say that I think that it's equally important that we concentrate on the quality of the programming at all of our schools. And so that's just a, that's just a comment. Let's see. Because I did, I did hear a comment about a pipeline for music in South Boulder, and I felt it's just not fair, that if you happen to live in South Boulder, you get the pipeline for music, and if you live somewhere else in our district, there might not be that pipeline that exists. And I would hope that we would be addressing those kinds of issues as well. Let's see. And then I'm going to, so, and that's it, except I will comment that Colorado School Finance Project is meeting on Friday, and should any of our board members be interested in attending, I believe it's at CEA from 10 to 1, and it's, they always have a good discussion, and I know that we're talking about really important issues around school finance, both for this year and for more permanent fixes, so that we don't, we don't find ourselves repeating this conversation in the way that we've been in the 20 years I've lived in Colorado. Oh, and one more thing. I would like to give a shout-out to Ms. Amy Ombacher's class, because not only do her kids, not only are they getting it, they always write me thank-you notes when I go to read to them, and so I'm always really glad that our kids are learning letter-writing skills and courtesy. I think it's great, so thank you.
Anyone else? All right. I was also going to acknowledge the election. Shelley, my colleague here, congratulations on another four years. And Kathy Gebhardt, over here, who will be in my seat in South Boulder District C, and Richard Garcia in the back, welcome. Soon you'll be sitting up here, and it will be a great experience. It's a lot of fun. So congratulations on your elections. I wanted to just talk briefly about the music program, or that, all the discussion about music. First of all, I think all students should be able to have an opportunity to learn a musical instrument. I just think it's key to their growing up, and part of what we need to do in public education. And I was really taken by the comments of, "Why do you always cut music and the arts?" And not that we have cut it, but I see that when you have to make a choice, it is a cut. That's how I see it in my mind. And I would like to see that all students have an opportunity to learn music. But I'm also not sure when the best time to do that is. Is it fourth grade, or fifth grade, or sixth grade, or second grade? So, you know, I think there's some real questions here and some opportunities to think out of the box a little bit, to decide, how do we teach instrumental music, and how do we think about creativity, and teamwork, and social norming, and belonging to groups? And so, just because we have this fifth-grade program the way it is today... All different in... do we think about creativity, and teamwork, and social norming, and belonging to groups? And so, just because we have this fifth grade program the way it is today, all different in any of our thirty-five different schools, elementary schools that we have, so, you know, I'm interested in this conversation about what is the best thing that we should be doing to make sure that we're taking full advantage. But it doesn't necessarily mean, in my opinion, that we need to stay with what we've always done. That would be stuck in the mud. And so let's just be creative and think about how really to engage our kids in, in instrumental music. I think, I think we've heard from the community, certainly we haven't heard from everyone, we haven't heard from people in every single community, I think, but we've heard from a lot of people, and, and I know from my own personal experience, that this community values music education. And so it's a difficult thing when you start tinkering with it. So it's, it's something I think for the task force to, to look at and, and think about what the values are. One of the values we have is an idea that a school can make a site-based decision, and a decision by this board and administration about the importance of uniformity. And those are some real interesting questions about which values do we uphold over all others? And, you know, we, we do need kids to have the same amount of time in school, but one of my personal values will be that they all should be learning musical instrument, give it, give it a shot. And let's think out of the box. This can be a win-win. We can have a better program, I think. It doesn't necessarily have to be the same. And Jim thanked our colleagues for an opportunity to serve with you, and I would do the same. I would also just say thanks to the voters who elected me eight years ago, and then again four years ago, I guess, and it's just been a real pleasure to be able to serve and to learn the various things that we've learned about, including tonight, hearing from some great kids. There's nothing better than hearing from students and passionate parents to be talking about the instrument. I liked seeing those two clarinets here in the front row, that was pretty nice. Anyway, thank you for the opportunity to serve. We do have a meeting next week, don't we?
We do not have a meeting scheduled.
We don't have a work session next week?
Don't have a topic.
Pardon me?
We do not have a topic for a work session next week.
Okay. I just had it held on my calendar. And then our next meeting will be Tuesday, December 1st, where we'll swear in the new board members and have a reception, and that'll be fun. So, that is it, I think, for board communication. We will proceed with the rest of our agenda, which is an information item on the bond program and on the strategic plan. And I'm going to guess that some of you, you're welcome to stay and listen to it, it's really exciting, but we also, why don't we take a two-minute break? I'll pull us back to, to business. We've taken a short break here, while some of our guests left. Let's see, the next item on our agenda is an information item, and it is update on the bond program, building for student success. And Dr. Messenger, would you like to give us an update?
We'd like to provide you an update. Thank you for the opportunity. So this is not our first update, but we are making good progress, and our commitment, the last time we reported to you, is that we would do this on a regular basis. And so we actually, this evening, we broke this presentation into two, into two parts, because we think there's value in having a chance to see the work we're doing around the actual building projects. And then we also are going to focus in December as a part of a information item on the workaround innovation that relates to this. So we'll touch just briefly on innovation this evening, but we'll bring it back and, for our information topic on, in December to do that. So I just want to acknowledge, before we start, the work that Don Orr is doing as our chief facility officer, and his team. This is a big project. We've got a lot going on. We have eighteen school in Phase One, and we're working on designing and preparing to construct new schools. And so Don's leadership and his team with Susan Cousins and all the other project managers are doing a great job. Each Wednesday, our team gathers for ninety minutes, members of cabinet along with Don, and work on these very issues. And so the consistency in that planning and the work we're doing, I'm very pleased with everything that's coming together. The one thing I want to mention, which will be obvious as Don presents this evening, and in December when we present again, we have really intentionally, and I've said this before, but I'm going to say it again, we've really intentionally brought the strategic plan and the planning around this bond and building construction together, so that as we look at the educational design of renovated space or new space, is by design complementing the work we're doing around the strategic plan, so we can maximize the learning opportunities for our students, whether they're our preschoolers all the way through our, our high school students. And so, and that's pretty unique. The folks that we are working with, Fielding Nair International, they share with us that this is really a unique environment we're in. One is that we have such a supportive community, that is going to invest $576 million in our schools, which is a real tribute to the Boulder Valley School District citizens, and that we're coordinating that with our strategic planning effort. They just said that's not what they normally find, and they applaud that effort. So, we're not there yet, this is big work ahead of us, but I'm really pleased with our, where we're at today. So Don's, we have a PowerPoint which is attached to your agenda, we'll also project it on the screen. So Don, thank you for being here this evening and presenting to the board.
Great, and thanks very much for having me. So it's been a year since the voters of BVSD passed the bond, $576 million, largest in the state's history. So I'm going to give you a quick overview of how we're rolling out or implementing the first phase of that bond project. There we go. So we actually completed some work. We started work this summer. We did some isolated site work, paving projects, primarily parking lots and some irrigation. So we do have some projects that, that are actually complete. School, most of our school projects are progressing through design and preparing for, for bidding. One project, Centaurus, is in the programming stage. I've listed five projects are in schematic design phase. I believe eight projects are in design development phase. The schematic design phase is just preliminary design, it shows scale and relationships. The DD phase, or design development, describes the size, character of the project in much greater detail. We look at systems, mechanical, electrical, structural, civil, et cetera. So, a lot of work. This, this slide just tries to capture what those Phase One projects are and what their status is. The exemplar school design, so you know our replacement elementary schools, our exemplar schools, along with Centaurus, but our, and Erie, our elementary exemplars are developing, developing schematic designs now. Each project has had several design advisory team meetings. I think there was a comment by Sam at a board meeting that he attended, found that very rewarding. It's a very inclusive process. We're, we've got DAT members that represent the neighborhood, the school, the staff. We take public input at these meetings, and so the exemplar projects are going through that, those steps right now. Primarily, they're looking at site design, where to place the, the building on the site, how to keep the existing school in operation while we plan for construction of a new facility. The site design has to balance multiple interests, such as traffic flow, circulation, functional adjacencies, the existing building, any constraints that the site may have, energy efficiency, neighbor concerns, budget, et cetera. So the photo on this slide shows work we've done with neighbors out in Erie, related to the Erie campus, and our intent to try to involve them in the process. In early September, the exemplar school communities engaged in discovery visits with the architects to begin to envision the new school. Through interviews, tours, and workshops with staff and community, the design teams got to know the schools and what makes each unique. The newly released discovery reports highlight the key discoveries from those conversations, which will guide the designs of the new buildings. These discovery reports are all on the bond website, if you're interested in reading those for each school. This slide reflects what is a very aggressive schedule for the exemplar schools. You can see, design will continue through early 2016. We hope to start construction bidding in late winter, or early spring 2016. We'll start construction next summer, and we're expecting move-in and occupancy for the 2017, 2018 school year. So Centaurus is also, I mentioned, an exemplar school. It's the only one that's not a new building, it's a renovation of that. So the process is, is similar, but a little bit different, and I'll tell you a little bit about that. Like, like the other existing exemplar schools, the design of Centaurus is outdated and obsolete from an educational functionality perspective. However, there is potential to make significant improvements to the learning environment through renovations rather than replacing the building. The school has engaged in the discovery process, similar to the other exemplar schools, and we're now currently in the process of developing a master plan for the renovation work. And the purpose of the master plan is to evaluate the long-term needs of the school beyond the limits of the bond. The resulting recommended improvements would thereby address the necessary changes to the school to transform it into a fully exemplar facility, fully addressing the requirements of 21st century learning. The master plan will also address growth of the school based on population increases and circular growth requirements. Our work with Fielding Nair to integrate educational innovation into the project continues. Fielding Nair recently won the McConnell Award, a pinnacle award among designers of educational facilities. Over the course of several days in August, FNI worked with district leadership, principals, and teachers through a series of workshops to help us define what educational innovation looks like for BVSD in terms of instruction and the strategic plan. The innovation-guiding principles were developed out of this work. These ideas will guide the transformation of instructional practice in the district and how we design learning environments to support it. We have also developed a process for evaluating innovation projects and distributing funds to schools. In December, we will bring you more information on the, the strategic plan and educational Addressing district energy consumption is a key component of the district's sustainability planning. Energy use, used for electricity and heating and cooling needs has significant impact on the district's environmental footprint and budget. Our short, or, excuse me, our first short-term goal aligns with the state of Colorado's reduction quantity goal of twenty percent for greenhouse gas emissions below 2005 levels by 2020. This goal will synchronize with, with our own sustainability management system's five-year goal timelines. The second goal is long-term and aligns with the SMS stretch goal of zero net energy buildings. Zero net energy buildings produce as much electricity through renewables as they consume. On-site renewables can typically produce enough energy for a building with the energy unit intensity, EUI, of thirty or below, making this mark to shoot for in designing zero net energy-capable. making this mark to shoot for in designing zero net energy capable buildings. So that's our goal. The Educational Facility Master Plan identifies several types of projects to support our aggressive energy goals. Our green building guiding principles state that new buildings will be designed to be zero net energy or zero net energy capable. Zero net energy capable buildings are designed to be as energy efficient as possible and to allow for the future installation of renewable energy generators such as wind turbines or photovoltaic panels. Other energy efficiency projects in the building program include deep energy retrofits and retrocommissioning repairs. Deep energy retrofits will be performed in buildings with significant work planned for the mechanical system, which provides the opportunity to conduct an analysis of the whole building and identify other energy-saving measures. Retrocommissioning ensures mechanical systems are running as designed by reviewing programming and identifying needed repairs. Other energy-saving measures in the building program include upgrading boilers, lighting, and HVAC controls. Most schools will receive some type of energy efficiency upgrades. In September, design teams for the new construction projects in Phase One participated in a workshop to learn about design process, best practices, that will help these projects reach the district's goal of being zero net energy or zero net energy capable. The workshop was led by CMTA engineers, a national leader in zero net energy school design, and the Rocky Mountain Institute, a sustainability think tank. In addition to providing guidance and tools for the project teams to meet the goals, the workshop created the opportunity for the teams to connect with each other, to share ideas and strategies. A similar workshop for design teams on deep energy retrofit projects was held in July. Our CBOC, the Citizens Bond Oversight Committee, provides independent review, monitoring, and oversight of the implementation of the projects in the bond program. It is comprised of representatives from each community in BVSD with relevant professional experience. The committees met three times since May. At those meetings, we provided background information about the development of the facility master plan as well as the sale of the bonds last April. The group has been briefed on key elements of implementing the program such as our pre-qualification process, our procurement process, and the process for distributing innovation funds. At each meeting, the group receives an update on the progress of the projects and financial reports. These meetings are open to the public and agendas and minutes are posted on the website. CBOC actually will be coming and presenting to the board their first quarterly report at a board meeting in January. So that's a really quick overview of the work we've done since we've last presented, I think six months ago. And I'd be happy to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you, John. Thank you for bringing this report. Board members, are there any questions of Bruce or Don? Shelley?
Thanks for this presentation, Don, and thanks for everything you're doing on the bond. I know that it's just a huge layer on what was already an incredibly, you know, difficult job. So thank you for...
I've got a top-notch team and we're fully staffed and ready to go.
I know, but I know it can't be easy. So I want to ask you just a quick question about design advisory teams. So I know that you seek out input from these various groups to give input into the team. And then they go off and put together something with the architect, some sort of drawing. Is there some sort of feedback loop then back to that team to show them what those drawings look like and see if it came out the way the DAT was envisioning?
There is. So the design advisory teams stay engaged in the process, the development of the building design through the end of the design development phase. So right now, we're in the initial schematic design phase and we're looking at relationships, property lines, orientation, et cetera. So they do stay involved. Now, often, the design team will create a number of different alternatives on how best to meet the needs of the DAT or how best to cite the building. And the DAT will reach a consensus, not always unanimous, on which design to advance. You know, what's really the preferred alternative? So we're somewhat there right now, Creekside. I think there were two options that were being considered. The DAT is balancing the input that they receive at these public hearings and providing direction to the architectural firms.
I know. I mean, it has to be difficult to figure out how to meet what everyone wants in one design, for sure. I'm just hearing a little bit of feedback from one of the exemplar schools that the design that came forward didn't really look a lot like what some of the input was. And so I was just wondering if it's an iterative process or whether they were just seeing a first shot at the design and there might be more coming or... And my question isn't so much about Douglas, this was the school, but just in general. Like, do we have that system down so that people feel like they've been heard, you know, in that critical stage?
Oh, they've been heard. Now, the next question, have we been able to accommodate all the input we've received? So you have to balance that with, so that some direction. We've given direction to the design teams to design to a particular square footage, and that's driven by the budget.
Right.
Additional size of the building impacts budget. So each of our exemplar schools, and we meet weekly as a staff, and I know we've got, we also connect with the FNIs and the local architects weekly with a phone conferencing. So each of those processes is a little bit different. Those schools that we've got two different design studios working on three schools or two studios working on four, if you include Erie. Erie's a little bit different than the three replacement schools. So, you know, we meet, I would say, input's been factored in. But, you know, everyone wants always more space and then sometimes concessions have to be made. We're designing to a square footage that delivers the educational program.
I don't think that that's it necessarily. I just want to make sure that process has like a double feedback loop, you know, before you get too far in.
Sure. Bruce?
I think to your question, Shelley, it is an iterative process and we go and we go and we go. But at the end of the day, if there's fifteen or eighteen folks, there will be difference opinions. And I mean, it isn't like they reach full consensus on exactly what it is. And they are intended to be representative of the community, but it isn't the whole community. So it, I mean, we go back and forth and continue to move forward. And so, I mean, there's a lot of dialogue around it. But eventually, because we want to build these buildings, we need to bring closure to it. And so, I mean, it's, there are a lot of moving pieces. And so I, you know, having been involved in these weekly meetings reviewing this, it's a very iterative process. And people enter the process thinking they know exactly what they want the school to be, and it might be different than the person right next to them. And so we have a lot of dialogue around that. And some of the charts that Don presented, some of the work sessions that have gone on, if you go on the website, I think it'll give you, and you go into the schools to see what they've compiled, I think you'll see the diversity of the input and eventually how you walk down that path together. So I feel very good about the process. I mean, this is, I'll just tell you from my own experience, having this level of input and this work is pretty unusual. And so the challenge, the beauty of that is the level of input you get in the process. The challenge is to bring it down so that you wind up with a final product that's doable within budget, fits the campus, meets the kids' needs, and all of those things. So that's the work we're doing right now.
I'm just reflecting back on the, when I went to visit the Isabel Bird School in Denver, and you remember Sunny Zen and the Bushnell's. They just could not emphasize enough how that building works because of the input from the teachers.
Yeah.
That it was absolutely critical in making that building work. And I just hope that we're doing that for our teachers in the same way that they did.
The other thing is that we have to just remember, these buildings last for fifty years plus. And so this is a group of teachers. This is a community, and they will transition and there'll be another behind them. So part of our worry and the architects' worry is building a building that just works for this group of parents and teachers, but those that follow them and those that follow them. So, you know, we really have to look now and beyond as we do that. So, yeah, I think absolutely what you're describing is what we're doing. Again, this is a very open process. And they're all, all the DAT meetings are open. And so they're all public meetings and we have folks who set in on those, who aren't necessarily on the DAT, and they can give input as well.
I'll just comment on the DAT process, and I haven't seen anything with this particular bond. But I do know that it worked well. And, Don, I think part of that was your leadership and learning, the learning experience that we went through with the first bond eight years ago, was that there were a couple of glitches along the way where we just learned that there were better ways to do things. And so if, I'm assuming that you're probably following the lessons that we learned from the DAT process over the years.
We refined it, yeah, no doubt. I think the superintendent's comments are spot on. You know, we're balancing and competing interests sometimes. You know, we've got issues where you're building a building, a replacement building, let's talk about the exemplars, and trying to retain students and not disrupt instruction, to the extent possible, keep them in the building like we did at Columbine, rather than relocate them offsite or put them in temporary classrooms during the period of construction. So you're balancing that against the budget, against traffic issues, against neighborhood view issues. And it's a very dynamic process, but it is an inclusive process. So all viewpoints are considered. But ultimately, the DAT provides guidance to the design team. If they fail to reach consensus, the provisions under the DAT guidelines is the bond planning team provides, or the district provides that guidance to the architects. So it's, I think the process works well. There'll be, there'll always be those that want to see the plan, you know, go a slightly different direction. You know, that's, and that's just, that's the process. They're advocating for their particular spot in the building or square footage in the building. And it is, it's a giant balancing act. It's, we get there. But in the beginning of it, it's, it's not always, not everybody's always on the same page.
Thank you. Board members, any questions? Tina?
Thanks for the presentation and for all the work you're doing. I can imagine it's a huge task in front of you. So I had two questions. One is, you mentioned that there's innovation in instruction is driving how the buildings are being designed, the exemplars. What do you tell community members about what the instruction would look like? Because that's a gap that I have. I don't know what the innovative instruction looks like. So, you know, so what do you say when you're presenting to a group?
You want me to take a stab?
So I would say that that's, what we're designing with the input is space that's really flexible. Really flexible space so that as instructional priorities and strategies change over time, this is an environment that's conducive to that. What we know from our traditional design of buildings, and so buildings that we're remodeling right now, is that they're very static and not a dynamic space very much. I mean, we have some exceptions to that. So whether it's large groups, small groups, larger groups like community groups, that these buildings will be designed to create that level of flexibility. So what they call our learning studios or classrooms that where you can have your twenty-five children and have what would be more traditional, or you can bring all seventy-five third graders together if that's what you need to do on a given day, or any combination of those. And so then smaller learning settings and bigger, and they really utilize space in different ways to accommodate that. And then there's more traditional spaces too, like gymnasiums for physical education and those kinds of things. So it's about, so the design of the space is really about being, to foster or be conducive to lots of different strategies. So that, because some of the frustration we've heard from our own staff now is they can't exercise that. They don't have that flexibility. So then if you look, and this is really the topic for the next meeting, so I'm going to ask that we postpone some of this until Kipony is here and we look at the innovation guidelines. Because it's the innovation guidelines and the process we went through to develop those, which we'll introduce when we are together in December, are really what guides the planning model around that. And those same innovation guidelines are used in all schools, not just the exemplar schools. So problem-based learning, your email this morning talked about problem-based learning. It is an example of an instructional strategy that creates greater engagement. Research bears that out and gives students different kinds of opportunities that are more integrated and holistic. And some of our teachers are ready to do it today and some of our teachers are not. So coupled with all of this work around designing schools, and I'll bring it back to what I said earlier about the strategic plan, because out of our own vision, mission, values, and goals, we talk about relevant, meaningful, engaging learning that came right out of this room two and a half years ago when we set those. And so we're creating a space that is conducive to that. And when teachers are ready to do it, they'll be ready to go. And those who aren't quite ready, we're going to give them support to do that. So there's a whole professional development strand that goes with this work, not just in the exemplar schools, but at all schools. And we'll do it in a way that will help teachers be successful. So just like today, if we looked across the district, we have folks doing different things and they're in instructional strategies. And we will three years from now and five years from now. But we believe that to be consistent with our strategic direction of the district, to make learning more meaningful, engaging, and relevant to the learner, that some of that needs to change. And we're working to design these environments that is, will foster that and be conducive to that. So again, I think when Kipony presents and in December, we can give more elaboration on that. And certainly when we go further down the path, we can give greater description to it. As we visit schools or look at schools that are designed with some of this approach, you know, this is the kind of learning that we see go on there. So I hope that's helpful.
Then my second question relates also to the email I sent earlier today about capacity and enrollment.
Yeah.
And what, so what kind of, so when I was reading the policy FAFB that talks about facilities development goals and facilities planning, it suggests that the board should spend some time looking very closely at future enrollment, future capacity. And I think that because of our budget situation for the next five years, I'm taking a harder look at some of these bigger ideas of what will our budget look like? How are we going to accommodate all of our schools? How are we, are we being very, very careful with enrollment levels? And are we going to be able to fill every school within district students? And I'm just, would like us to have a discussion soon about that or, because I have some, I know there's not, our schools are not full in the southeast corner. There's been some declines in enrollment, but I don't have projections for that area. And I also know that we're somewhat reliant on the elementary level on out-of-district enrollment. It's about thirty to twenty-five percent out-of-district in three of our schools. So I just want to make sure that we're not missing an opportunity to do a long-term budget advantage for us as we think about enrollment. And it could be that there's this huge growth anticipated, but I haven't seen the enrollment projections for that particular area. And I don't know if that's a possibility.
Are you talking about Emerald? Are you referring to Emerald?
Emerald, Colberg, and Eldorado K-38, which had low enrollment this year. So it's that whole, it's that, if we could just look at the enrollment and the projections for there, it would be great.
So Glenn will present the enrollment in January. That's work that we do each year. So the numbers I shared with you this morning are based on those projections.
Right.
So that's what we built that on. The reality is, we're building for the students that are there and those that we anticipate being there in the near term, three to five years, I would say. And again, these buildings last fifty years. And so districts go through cycles. And so if we only use the neighborhood resident students at Fairview, it would be less than half-full. But the reality is with open enrollment, that's not how that works. And so we anticipate who will reside in the area and as those homes turn over and new families move in. So Whittier recently, Lewisville Elementary recently, Lewisville Elementary was down to four hundred students. We opened up open enrollment. Now we're up to six hundred students with no open enrollment. So we go through those. So when we build buildings, we try to right-size them based on the information we have, but probably won't, what won't dictate that is an exact hard number on projected enrollment twenty-five years from now. Because honestly, we don't know. So we, and there's some efficiencies in creating sizes of schools. If you create a school much smaller than these we are creating, then they create inefficiencies around staffing, which makes the budget issue really difficult. So we've worked really hard to right-size schools physically, the physical plant, and right-size them with enrollment. So when we bring open enrollment students in, either within district or out of district, that generates the general fund revenue that we need to hire the teachers that are in that building. Because without that revenue, we would have fewer teachers, which would affect the programming for the students that are in the resident area. So it's all of those in combination that we look at, and have four years in this district. I mean, one of the advantages of being a district that is attractive within district and out of district in is that we have some ability to manage that. So the numbers that you saw in the email I shared with you today are based on our projected enrollment. enrollments, and we probably only can look out so far. But there's housing stock in these neighborhoods that even if they're aging, they will turn, we've watched it happen before, and, you know, Glenn's presentations, he's talked about that before, that life cycle looks different than new construction, and the nature of new construction, he can better predict, you know, one and a half children per household or whatever. So those are all taken into consideration, but it's not a hard, fast number, unless in the Erie where we know it's going to be a number of single-family homes that are going to be, you know, one and a half children per household, but in 30 years, that will look different too, because those children will be at high school and college, and we'll have empty nesters in all those houses where we have all those children right now too. So, I mean, that's a life cycle that we know that will go through. So that's a lot of what influences the capacity, tries to influence the capacity of our buildings.
Well, I would love just to have a discussion about it when we go, when we look at the enrollment projection, so that I can just understand, you know, how much are we relying on out-of-district to keep our doors open, and how much, you know, one thing is in-district and open enrollment, but then there's out-of-district open enrollment, which is a little different because it affects our taxes for our, the people living in the district pay more if we take more, and I get the, I get the whole funding thing. So I would just like to, you know, talk about it, and that'd be great. Thanks.
Yeah, I can say that we're not building excess capacity for out-of-district students within the three replacement schools. Erie's a little bit different, you know, so the three replacement schools, we've got a, we've got a built community around there, and as Dr. Messenger mentioned, you know, there's some turnover as the housing stock ages. Erie's a little bit different in the sense that we haven't really felt the impact of the development yet. There's, so we've done fairly detailed projections on build-out of Erie. We'll need another facility in Erie. We're not designing, we're designing this, we're right-sizing this for what we have students now, and what we anticipate, probably in the next seven to 10 years. But ultimately, as more homes are constructed in that community, we'll have to provide additional capacity.
Jim?
So I'll be gone soon, and you'll like that. I'd just like to remind my fellow board members, who especially were going to be here after this, this bond was sold to the community with a facilities master plan attached that said, here is what BVSD is going to do if you give us this money. There's some wiggle room in there, there's some design considerations to give us some flexibility around things, but if the board goes mucking around in there, changing things up, the next bond you go for, the community's going to say, hey, you sold us a bill of goods last time. We have a CBOC, if there's changes that need to be made, which there will be, there were in the previous process, I would recommend that you ask for recommendations from CBOC, ask for recommendations from the DAT team, start the conversations there. Let them make recommendations to you, let them chew on it before it's a political issue. Let them make it the best community decision that can possibly happen. Thank you.
Well put. Thank you. Yeah. Jenny?
I'd like to build on that, because I'm not quite sure, I mean, I thought that we sort of complied with Policy F when we had a capital improvement planning committee that created a master plan, and I think that, I think that was the compliance, so I'm not, so I guess I'm going to say that I think we are really compelled to follow the plan absent good reason not to, and we would need recommendations from CBOC, but I'm also kind of curious, because it sounds to me like what you're suggesting is that we, I mean, as a worst-case scenario, that we just not build a new school at Emerald, and that we, so surely that's not what you're saying, that, because that alarms me, it makes, I mean, that alarms me.
No, it's more about where, I think we're going to be in this budget area for a while, and, you know, should it be a four-round school, should it be a three-round school? Like, what are these, I know it's not going to be a hard and fast number, but as our enrollments are changing, and I feel like there were some bigger changes this year, especially in Eldorado K-8, is there any kind of, do we need to look at these numbers again, just as part of our normal duties as a board?
Well, and we would, and we would want to know from Glenn, and we can have that conversation in January, that whether that's an occasional dip or something that's more permanent, although actually, I would say that some of the schools in Superior could stand a dip that would help with our capacity there. That's just my guess. So could I ask, are you done? Because, I mean, I don't, does that sound abrupt? I didn't mean to. No, if you're done, I have a question, but if otherwise, I'm just.
Go ahead. Jenny?
Please.
So, speaking of, you raised this, are we building, I heard, I thought I heard somebody say that we're building Emerald as a two-round, the new building will be a two-round school, and that just didn't make any sense to me.
That would be an answer.
Oh, thank you. Okay, so we're not? Okay.
Not two-round, we're still landing on it's two and a half or a three-round, we're still trying to resolve that, and seeing how we accommodate. So right now, Emerald doesn't have three rounds at every grade level.
Right, right, yes.
And if you look back, I mean, we're sizing that building at 400, that's about the peak of their enrollment over the last 10 years.
Yeah, okay, okay.
And that's what's driving it. Now, how that breaks out by grade, remember, we're talking both learning studios and learning communities, so there's a lot of this common area or flexible space that we're talking about, that teachers have the opportunity to move into. So, no, we haven't, definitely not a two-round.
Okay, and that wouldn't be through Creekside either, which has similar numbers, no, we're just not doing that kind of thing.
So I think that, again, it's really hard to look 50 years out, it's really hard. And so what we're trying to do is create this flexible space, so that on a given year, if they need three fourth grades, we can accommodate that. Most years, if they need two fourth grades, we can accommodate that. The pattern at Emerald has been three in the primary and two in the intermediate, but on any given year, that could look different, and so can we accommodate that? So that's really, so we're working, you might recall, Nederland Elementary came and presented to us last spring around the budget time, they talked about they're moving to multi-grade configuration, so I went up in July and met with those parents, and then I went back up with our staff a couple of weeks ago and visited those classrooms. Some of what Ned Elementary has is some flexibility in their design, even though that building's going on 30 years old, it has some flexibility, so that they're, because they have a declining enrollment, they need some flexibility around multi-age grouping, and so it would even be better if it was one of the buildings we're designing right now, but it's better than if it were traditional. So we're trying to make design spaces based on the best information we have, which Don just described, and so that on a given year, if we had three fourth grades instead of two, we could accommodate that. I mean, that's really what we're trying to do.
That's fine, I just heard, I just heard a vague rumor, and I thought, oh, that's, I'm glad to hear that that was wrong. Thank you.
Earl Snopes. Yes. Tom?
So a lot's been covered, I won't drag this out, but I did have a couple of questions regarding to some of the discussions about communication. So as with most things, communications is really, really important. Have we set up resources, say, a school website, so that that school community, you know, whichever school community can go to and find out the most recent information, what's going on with the DAT, what's going on with the plans, the schematics, so on and so forth? Is that available and advertised to the communities now?
Sure is. So on the bond webpage, which can be found through the district's webpage, we have all 18 projects in Phase 1. If you click on any one of those projects, it'll take you and give you the specifics or the details, when the DAT meetings are, the agenda, the minutes of those meetings, the discovery reports on our exemplar projects, scheduled meetings that are, will be held.
Okay, so a teacher at a school could go there and look and see what the latest decisions, key decisions have been made.
Definitely, and community members, everyone has access to it. If you have a question that you want to pose, all the meetings for CBOC are also listed on there, questions you want to pose to CBOC or to a design team, there's an opportunity to do that, if you can't attend a meeting. We devote the first portion, just like you do, the first portion of every meeting to public input. So we take it both in person or electronically.
Great, so that's good to hear. And speaking about communication also, just for the, for the education of our listeners, when you say exemplar, what do you mean?
So the exemplar projects are our three replacement schools, Creekside, Douglas, and Emerald, our Erie campus, and our, and Centaurus.
Okay, but beyond those schools, does the term exemplar mean anything?
We're using that term because those projects also involve fielding near international, working with a local architect, and so those will become our demonstration schools, if you will, because they're a wholesale rebuild. We're starting pretty much from the ground up, with the exception of Centaurus.
So the latest.
A little bit different than the rest of the schools within our inventory, where they're seeing, for the most part, deferred maintenance upgrades.
Right.
The only program enhancements are primarily at the elementary level with early childhood education and full-day K. So they all have an opportunity to access innovation funds. Kipony will talk about how that process works in December. But those are just, that's the descriptor that we've used to distinguish those four schools.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Anyone else? I had a question about energy, and I think, I heard you say, and I think I'm reading it here on this report, that you have built in the capacity to later on add solar and wind turbines, but we're not doing it now. Is that a budget question? Is that why?
Yeah, it's both budget and, you know, if there's really any financial incentives. You know, our solar portfolio, for the most part, is funded through a power purchase agreement, so there were no capital costs from the district. We benefit by reduced usage, but we didn't have to install the system. So we would be looking for those kinds of either grants or rebate opportunities in the future.
So.
These budgets, let me just give you an advance notice, are all going to be challenged anyway. So we'll position ourselves to take advantage as incentives become available, but the budgets couldn't afford to absorb those costs on their own, as it is.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, Bruce, any other comments about this?
No, I appreciate the questions, I mean, I, well, obviously, it's later than we'd even planned yet, but the two presentations together will be helpful, I think, when we bring, come back in December, and have a chance to take a deeper dive on the work we're doing around the innovation, and I think to Tom's question about the exemplars, Don's answer was right on. And we envision that going down the road, some of the training we can do for some of these instructional strategies around problem-based learning and different use of flexible space, we can demonstrate right in these schools. And as there's time to do remodels down the road, I would put Summit in the same category as well. We didn't call it that because, you know, just because it's a charter and it's a different relationship, but some of the design work in Summit will serve that same. In fact, they're six, eight months ahead of our work, just because of the timing of their early design work with FNI, but I think we'll be able to demonstrate some there, and they've offered to do that, so they'll showcase some of that same space as well that Don described. So thank you for your attention to this, and Jim, you'll want to stay tuned, I know you're, and Laurie too, so watch this, come out of the ground, it's going to be fun.
I know, I wish I was going to be on a DAT.
We have some past former board members that are on DATs, I understand.
Yeah, I think it's a great idea. Yeah, people care about it. I don't know.
All right, are we ready for the next opportunity?
Okay, so, yes, I would just say, thank you, Don Orr, for that presentation, it was great, very informative, thanks. The next item on our agenda is the strategic plan, the success effect, which, as you've been saying all evening, is, goes parallel with the bond, so as we implement both of these, so Bruce?
Well, thank you for this opportunity, and before we formally make this transition, I just want to do one shout-out for the work that Don's team is doing, and that's into Tom's question about the communication. Susan Cousins, I mean, we're fortunate, because we have a lot of folks who worked on the last bond, and you know most of them, including Susan, but she's doing an exceptional job around communication, and she's right beside us on all these projects. So anyway, I think that's what it's allowing, is to maintain that high-quality communication. I know it is, so thanks for that. All right, so what we promised is that we would come back and continue our conversation around the strategic plan, and so that's what we're going to do this evening, and so Leslie Arnold's going to step to the podium just a second. Leslie, as you know, is our Assistant Superintendent for Strategic Initiatives, and so what we want to focus on this evening has to do with the work we're doing around, the most recent work we're doing with multi-tiered systems of support and the support around that. The, you might recall, when we talked about this before, the multi-tiered systems of support, we embrace the Colorado Department of Education model, and what we've also shared with you before is that we're building this off of the work that we did previously around RTI, or Response to Intervention. And Response to Intervention was really targeted interventions around students who had those needs, and was really focused on just that instructional aspect. The multi-tiered systems of support is a more holistic model, it has multiple dimensions that is more encompassing. RTI, those strategies, will still be a part of MTSAs, so it isn't like we have forgotten that dimension of it, but it's just really a more holistic view that really affects the whole school and district community. So this is a really important part of our work going forward. One of the things I just wanted to mention, then I'm going to turn it over to Leslie, and there may be some follow-up questions on this as well. When we were working with Education Northwest, and we haven't ended our total formal relationship with Education Northwest, but we've sort of transitioned to another phase of our planning, and so we stay in touch with them, but our contract has about been fulfilled with them. But when we were using them more intensely, one of the things we asked the team for Education Northwest, we said, all right, so these 17 action design teams, we've got all this going on, and they kept saying, you got to get it down, you got to get it down, you can't do 17 things at once. You may think you can, but you can't. We said, okay, we agree. So we said, what are the things that we should do first, that are going to have the highest impact on student learning? And so they shared with us research that is research over time, macro view of practices that make the most difference over time. And so that was a very interesting conversation with them and work we did with them. But one of the areas that has the most impact consistently on student success is this idea of the, the multi-tiered systems of support, where we differentiate instruction around unique students' needs. So if you just think about it, if every student is engaged in meaningful learning activities for where they are, and growing at a maximum rate across the district, 31,000 students every day, just makes sense, you're going to get the most out of it, and that's a pretty big challenge to do that, because, you know, we have teachers who are responsible for a lot of children. So this work and this priority action area is really about creating, further developing a system, because it's not like we don't have some of this in place, but further developing a system that really is responsive to those unique needs of learners, which, as you recall, is in our vision, mission, and goals as well, because that's what we heard from our community. So how do we take a whole school district and go further down that path of differentiating and customizing the experience for all children, those that are most capable and those that might be struggling some? And so this multi-tiered system of support is what that's about. And so it is the most highly predictive of success in any school system, that's what the research bears out. So we would say all six of our areas are really important. This is, this is a big area, and so we're going to address that with you this evening. So I'm going to ask Leslie to come to the podium, and we'll give you some context for the work that's going on, and there'll be opportunity for questions. So Leslie, welcome.
Thank you. Madam President, thank you. Members of the board, Superintendent Messenger, I'm excited to be here again tonight to talk about the success effect priority action area for systems of support. And this is one other area that the schools are going to be a little bit impacted this year and next year and upcoming years, on just learning about what this all means to them, and how do we get this into the schools, and how do they start thinking about changing their practice and approaching students. And so just as a reminder, I mean, when we started looking at the strategic plan, we thought that if we, well, what we believed is that if we achieve and maintain student learning, we attract and support talented BVSD educators, and we establish and strengthen family partnerships and community partnerships, that that was all going to come together to increase student success. So with that, we've kind of done this tour with you, I guess, that we started with literacy and early learning, and at a work session, we talked about the success indicators and some of the things that have been accomplished, and then looking at the different committees, where I did speak a little bit about the assessment committee that falls under the systems of support, so I'm not going to talk a lot about that tonight, and the data warehouse, which also falls under systems of support. And as Dr. Messenger said, we are really going to just be talking about the multi-tiered systems of support kind of idea, and thinking about how this is going to be moving into the schools. So one thing, I think, this is maybe a little bit hard to read, but I wanted you to see that the committee that leads the MTSAs group specifically is broad-based, and there is a reason for them to be kind of coming with a bunch of different perspectives as they approach the work and how we get this into the schools, that it's really about looking at preventative types of activities that schools will be doing and educators will be doing, to be thinking about how we do universal instruction and support for our students. And so, like with all the other types of things that you've been hearing today, everyone's coming with a different perspective and really thinking about how can they merge this into, make it into a good support system, and a consistent support system for all of our schools and students. So the priority action team update, just from the systems of support, is really about establishing a leadership team, which you just saw, and getting a comprehensive data collection system, which would be the warehouse component, and looking at common assessments for the schools and the... component, and looking at common assessments for the schools and the teachers, and then rewriting the BVSD emergency operations plan, which is just getting started right now in that training. Because part of the piece isn't just about assessments, but it's also about security, and how do we think about our schools, and how do we protect our students from lots of different things. So, as we look at just the multi-tiered systems of support, the 2015-16 UIP goal, the Unified Improvement Planning Goal, is very simply just to understand the roles in the six areas, and I'm going to go through those areas, those six components, and then begin to maybe assess a little bit about what their level of understanding is in each of those components. So, with that, that they needed to, the schools needed to first kind of fill out this form, so to speak, that's really more about a self-assessment, like how do they feel that they're doing in looking at, like, data-driven instructional decisions and shared leadership and some collaborative experiences. So, they're rating themselves, and that's going to give us the, I guess, a perspective to be thinking about what type of professional development do we need to be looking at and putting out next year for our schools in this area. And that they will also be thinking about getting some common understanding, so that at the end of the school year, every school will have simple definitions, kind of as an understanding. They'll all have watched a video produced by the Colorado Department of Education that kind of explains the transformation that Dr. Messenger just spoke about, on moving this from just a intervention, an RTI, a Response to Intervention model, to more of a preventative type of component. So, the school-based discussions are really about what is multi-tiered systems of support? How does it relate? What are the roles? And what do we need to work on? So, the definition from the Colorado Department of Education really does talk about the whole school, and it talks about every student. So, it's not just the student that needs the support in an academic. It could also be a behavior component. It could also be that talented and gifted student that needs additional supports as well. But, it's also thinking about not separating necessarily a behavior with the achievement component, and really looking at those things together. Because if there are some behavior issues, or if there's things that are happening, attendance, et cetera, that may be raising some eyebrows for our educators in our buildings, that they're also looking at that achievement and academic kind of component as well, to see if there are indicators of maybe what's happening in the classroom and what may be causing the behavior. So, it's really looking at all different levels of this. And then, as they go through, the schools talk about the different components, they're talking about that shared leadership and how are they going to be making decisions, and looking at that database problem-solving and decision-making component, the layered continuum of support, so that if it's a counseling component, and it's a safety issue, and parent involvement, of course, and then looking at other supports that need to be put around that student, how do we bring all those things together, and how is it consistent across the district? The evidence-based instruction goes hand-in-hand with the assessment practices, and what I shared with you at the work session, I think it was a couple of weeks ago, or maybe it was last week, that that committee is really moving forward and thinking about how we look across the district on student achievement, not just in subject areas like math and reading and so forth, but we're looking at possible tools and survey instruments to start thinking about students' socioeconomic or emotional kind of behavior component of this, so that they're thinking that are their connections to an academic piece, on how a student perceives him or herself in the role of being a student and a learner. Then, we start looking at that universal screening and progress monitoring, which in K-5, we do quite a bit of with iReady and iStation and some of the math screeners. And then, of course, the family-school and community partnering, where, as you know, we have hired a director of, that's kind of leading this group, and how she fits into this piece and how that message gets spread out of how do we engage our families and communities a little bit more in each of our schools. So, truly, for this year, it's becoming just looking at a common understanding of what MTSAs, MTSS is in each school, and how are we going to apply it. But, then, our team is thinking about what are our next steps. And we're hoping by, I think it's around April or May, we're going to be giving feedback to the schools to start talking about how MTSAs goal will be changing for next year in the Unified Improvement Plan, what the schools will be thinking about and working on, and what they're going to need to know and do as they start entering the school year for the fall. We, I went ahead and put a link, because the Colorado Department of Education has a great resource base, and they have quite a few flyers and different ways of how they thought about this, the history behind it, how it relates to educator effectiveness, et cetera. And so, I think that if you are more interested, you can certainly go there and kind of explore a little bit as well. Plus, all the videos that we're posting to the schools are on the Colorado Department of Ed's website.
Thank you, Leslie. And I guess, I just, in closing, I would encourage you, if you have time and interest, to go ahead and check out the CDE links. You can go right on it. Dr. Messier was just sharing with me earlier this evening that the video on there is particularly instructive as well. So, this is a big, comprehensive model. And again, we feel really good about the approach. The CDE worked on this and how it's packaged. So, I think it, I think it'll complement nicely the work we're doing, as Leslie described. So, President Albright, members of the board, what questions might you have that we could respond to this evening or provide additional information?
Tom?
Yeah. Thanks for the presentation. I'll certainly go there and check this out. CDE, what I'd like to know is, does CDE recommend measures or metrics for determination of success of what we're doing? Or have we come up with independent measurements? And what will they be? How will they be implemented? And when will we start to see, you know, baselines and then progress against those metrics?
So, I'll start. If, Leslie, if you want to add to this, there certainly, the Colorado Department of Education, through the guidance from the state legislature, there are some of those measures that are in place. And we've talked about those from our state-level assessments and our REED Act and some of those areas as well. So, that is to be complementary to this work as we go forward. And we are, and as we've stated before, we are very committed to look at our own common assessments, and not just in academic, but we've talked recently too about social-emotional health and measures, surveys, quantifying that. So, I mean, we absolutely will embrace a good resource from the State Department, if there is one, and some we're obligated to do, so we will do that as well. But, we also are in the process as a part of this whole work that we're doing around the strategic plan, is finding those common assessments. And so, some of it is in the academic domain, but there are other areas mentioned in the MTSS that are beyond just the academic domain. So, do you want to build on that, Leslie?
Right. And specifically, CDE does have a rubric that is called the Practice Profile Continuum for each of these components, these six components. The leadership team that I shared with you a little bit earlier is now going through them to kind of see where we fall as a district on each of this rubric scale for each of these components. There is a gold standard that's listed. There is an acceptable variation and an unacceptable variation. And so, they're ranking, they're looking at, as a district, how we rank kind of in each of these areas and where we need to improve, where resources. And so, that's going to kind of guide, one, what we're talking about with the schools next year, how are they going, you know, what kind of training that the schools need, and then how do we kind of mobilize our support centrally, that it's a continuous kind of model throughout the whole district, so that they're getting consistent support. So, that's all listed on CDE's website as well.
And CDE has our data from their various assessments. Have they tried to utilize that to say how we fit within the various components, or are they just suggesting?
Well, it's not assessment-driven. It's not like data-driven in that way. It's more of how we are approaching, like, family and community partnerships, and what their suggestions and what research it states would be like a gold standard. So, yes, they do have all of our state-level data, and, but it doesn't necessarily mean that it's achievement data that they're looking at and putting into the, kind of the processes that are being put in place.
So, why I'm driving it is, is how are we going to know if this is working well or not working well from data, as to performance?
So, I'll just, let's go ahead and go back to literacy. So, that's probably our best data that we have, and we've shared that with the board, and we're still working on that. But, so, if systems of support and MTSS and differentiated instruction works, if we deliver on this, the parent piece, the leadership piece, all these, then what we'll see is that all of our learners will progress and grow. And so, it won't be just, it will be about getting children to a proficient level in literacy. So, on the academic side, the success of systems of support will be the success of our students in academics. And if we're looking at ways we collect information on social, emotional, and well-being, then that could be data. Could be fitness data. I mean, this is a really broad look holistically at children, which is what our community said they wanted us to do. They didn't want us to ignore our academic, but they didn't want it to be just academic. So, so those, so what Leslie described isn't that. But, we will have those common assessments in place, and we'll indicate that. We just met with the math team this morning, looking at our screeners. And so, we're preparing a presentation after the first of the year. So, what are the indicators of success? And so, I say, if the systems work, when the systems work, then we'll see all of that become, begin to come up in the student measures that we're using as well. It's just that it's not embedded in this model, per se. But, we'll use that as an indicator, because going through the actions and the strategies and the progress to a gold standard, if it doesn't then result in student being successful, well, then, either we didn't do it right, or it doesn't cause, so absolutely, the two have to go together.
Right. And so, that's why I'm striving, trying to understand, how are we going to determine that? And also, what is your timeline for the common assessments, you know, that we've talked about for a period of time now?
Well, we're anxious to see, the park data rolls out, the state-level data later this week is our understanding, student data later this fall. We need to determine, does that have value to us at all, and where does it fit in? So, we are working on that. And part of the adoption for literacy is, do we need additional assessment beyond what we're doing with iReady, iStation, LLI? And so, we're looking at that whole composite package. Actually, Dr. Messier, who's in the room, is chairing, co-chairing, directing, whatever the word is, the assessment committee. That's one of their tasks, is to look at what common assessments we already have in place. Are they valid? Are they giving us data that's helpful to us? Are they predictive validity? And then, where are the gaps? And there are gaps, and we know that. So, I'd say, timeline, Tom, I, I'm not going to commit to a definite timeline tonight, because I'd like to consult with where folks are in the planning. But, it will be a part of our planning model, and part of our project management work we're doing in Smart Sheets. We mentioned that in our last work session, will be to lay out those timelines and, you know, bring those forward. I mean, so, we need to look at what, because we're looking at the content standards, the curriculum that you approved in 11 and 12, to make sure that the assessments we're using really are aligned with those, because, and what we know is TCAP wasn't. So, TCAP is interesting, but TCAP isn't great value. We're right now going through an RFP on the ACT test again, so we may or may not be doing ACT this spring. We're waiting to find out what the state decides. So, but, we've talked about that. So, we're working on it.
So, I saw in the presentation, implementation 2016-17, which would imply that these assessments would be in place for 2016-17. Is that your goal?
Well, some are certainly in place now. I think the question we're deciding on the literacy assessments is, do they have value? We do not have money set aside in the budget to do a new common assessment in mathematics, for example. So, so that's why we're looking at our present screening for mathematics. Does it give us the information we need for all students, for levels of students? So, we're looking at that right now. If we're comfortable that we, and we have competence in those in mathematics, then there wouldn't be an additional cost necessarily, other than training around those. So, when we work on budget requests going forward for the strategic plan, if there's costs, if there's costs associated with acquiring common assessments, and there isn't always, it depends on how we get there, then we would need to build that into a budget plan.
So, we've had discussions in the past about having our own set as a district of common assessments, so we don't, so we're more insulated from the winds of change at the state level, for example, and that we can have a better baseline and track ourselves better and have, you know, a better understanding of where we, as a district, are, and have more timely data.
Yep.
Is that what you're talking about?
That's the work we're doing. Right. And, and our inventory isn't very rich in that area, because the history of this district is, we haven't done it. But, yes, that's exactly what we're looking at. So, so let's go back to the math, and we'll have a whole conversation on this one evening. But, if the screeners in mathematics, say, are predictive for third grade and fifth grade, of how students will do in middle school, if they're predictive, and that's some of what we're looking at right now, then that's a good internal assessment. So, what does success in middle school mean exactly? What does success in mathematics mean? Well, it's probably success within courses. It's probably success in their pre-high school readiness assessments that we do. And then, the question is, how does that relate to park? I mean, so, I mean, not that we live and die by park, but if it's also predictive of that, so what is a proficient fifth grader in mathematics? Would we know, would we know it if we saw it? And are we doing measures with third graders and fourth graders internally that are helping us adjust our instruction, so we increase that? And that's where the MTSS piece is, because some of those strategies will help us alter the instructional patterns so that we can have success. But, yes, our, our team has heard me say more than once, our commitment is to use common assessments that are ours, and our other effort is to reduce the state-level of assessment, so their teachers don't feel like they're testing all the time, our tests and the state tests. I mean, we already get that feedback. You know, third, fourth, fifth, all the way through eighth, have to give the park assessment in reading and mathematics. And we're asking them to do screeners, and they're also doing iReady and, and other assessments. So, we're trying to get that right balance. But, yes, we are working towards getting our own assessments. So, if the political winds shift, we still have our data.
Right. I have a lot of confidence in our teachers, and I believe they can look at their students and say, they're proficient or not proficient. And I like to tap into that in getting into our own common assessments.
So, they admit, so this math screener is administered by our teachers. That's who actually does the math screener, is our teachers. And then, if it's working for us, then it should inform their instructional decisions for that third grader or that seventh grader going forward. Well, yeah, I think you all know about reliability and validity. The reality is, if we don't work to create some standardization of those classroom-based assessments or department-based assessments, we can have great variability. We don't assess algebra in the same way in schools across this district, so it's left to a lot of teacher discretion. So, there's some risk with that. So, I agree with you, Tom. I think teachers are really great judges of that. But, there's also some value of having some consistency with it as well.
Sure.
So, that we can predict, because in 2021, our students will have to perform in some way around a competency-based assessment to graduate from high school. So, I want to be confident when they do that screener for high school, or whatever it is, that it's going to get them to meet or exceed that level in ACT, or whatever it is we're using at that time. So, we can say, "Stay on this path, you know, young adult. You're on your way. You're going to get there."
And what I was referring to is, is not having different assessments across different schools, but having our teachers come together and agree.
Right, right.
And they'll be able to find what.
And that's big work, and it's important work. And so, the resource request may be to create time, so go back to the ideal school day, not to bring up an earlier discussion, but some of the discussion around the ideal school day is to have a common professional work time within the work week, so math educators could come together and have that very conversation, and have Fairview, and Form Boulder High, and Form Monarch, and so that we can get to that place. Because, because you're right, there's good work on schools. What there isn't, is there's not a common assessment across that. So, it could be done in the summer, it could be done at other times, but either way, but it costs resources to do it.
Colleagues, Tina?
I think this sounds great, and thank you for the presentation. How are teachers feeling about it? Is it, is it feeling stressful? Does it feel like they have more work to do? Or is it just going pretty smoothly? I just want to speak to that.
Great, Leslie. I'll add to you. You can start this time.
I'm sorry, that's vague.
No, it's, that's all right.
It is vague. But, some, I go out to the schools as well, along with Sandy and Mark. And I think part of the component is, we get the thank you for kind of laying it out there with the UIP and kind of sharing kind of the path. For MTSS this year specifically, because literacy was a little bit more intense of what we were asking them to do with their literacy goals, and, and kind of looking at that. For MTSS, we just want them to have a common understanding. So, they've got the entire year to watch a nine-minute video to kind of talk about it in their schools, and have a principal lead their discussion for 30 to 45 minutes. And that's all we've asked them to really do this year, and to kind of self-reflect. So, I don't think for this specifically, that they're feeling stressed out about it, but they do know more's coming. And so, we want them to kind of get some understanding about what that more is by kind of doing some exploration with their groups in their schools, and then certainly on their own if they wanted to. But, we're not hearing any pushback on this, this year.
The only thing I would add is, I think our conversations with staff is, they feel this, this being the big this, the strategic plan is the right work, the common assessments discussion we just had, differentiating instruction. I mean, I know, I think folks get it, that that's important, and that's the work we need to do. And they know it's more work. And they're busy already. And so, so I, again, I think, and we are, we have a lot of internal conversations about our pacing this, so we I mean, they've got that full-time job, and so, you know, we try to be really thoughtful, and I think getting feedback along the way will be helpful. But we want to keep moving too, because we feel like it's, we've got to keep this thing moving, so, but we're real sensitive to that.
Shelley?
So thank you, Leslie, for this. Bruce, how tied in are we to CDE's MTSS model? I mean, I notice we're calling our, we're calling our strategic plan priority, you know, initiative, the same thing they're calling theirs, is that on purpose? Are we directly allied, are we required to?
No, 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 we're not required to. We have, it was a conscious decision when we started, so back when we talked to Education Northwest, and we looked at how to do that work that is predictive in the research literature to have the biggest effect. We looked at models around the country, including CDE, and we ultimately embraced it as that model. Now, we have some obligation to adhere to the model, because we're in Colorado, but we are, we are actually embracing it. We think it is the right model for us, and it's very comprehensive. So that commitment under systems of support to embrace MTSS, the state of, different states have different models. So the MTSS is used across the country, the terminology, but different states have different models. We believe this is a really good model, and aligns with work we have been doing and had planned to do as a part. So what you find is, if you look at MTSS, it really, it really gets into some of the other action priority areas. It isn't exclusive justice systems of support. So we're working through all of that, but we think it is the right model.
So when you say we're somewhat obligated, what do you mean?
Well, it is the state model for Colorado, and so...
We'd be held accountable at some point for doing some version of this?
I don't know, no, I don't know that we would be, to be honest. I mean, the reality is, all that's so much at play, we went to a meeting two weeks ago about accountability and accreditation, and I would just tell you, it's all at play. So, I mean, I wouldn't worry about it if we really thought it was a bad model, we'd embrace Iowa's or something. But, you know, we actually think it is a good model, and...
I actually did too. I mean, I actually went to their site and looked at their six things and went into them.
It was like the right stuff.
You know, it seems logical, basically, to me. What, I just wondered how much we're going to try to adhere to their, like, ideal format, because if you just take the first one, like, shared leadership, and then you look at who's on our team, it's all district people, whereas under their ideal model, we're looking at neighborhood, community, parents, whatever. So, I'm just wondering, are we trying to line up with the ideal model, because we're, like, not so far, you know, for A? And then B is, like, when I go to the universal screening part, and I see the behavioral data that they're looking for, and then I drill down to look into what they're actually looking at, it comes up blank. So you can't, either they don't have that flushed out themselves yet, or it's not available to me, you know, going into it. But I get worried when I don't know what behavioral data we're collecting, let alone academic data, and what that might mean for student privacy. So I want to be really careful about what we're collecting, I want to know what we're collecting, because once we collect it, it's out there unless we're not very careful. So that's why I'm asking, how tied are we to this?
I think we're as tied as we want to be, and so I think this all comes to play together, our earlier discussion on legislative platform about data privacy. I mean, we collect behavior data now, it's in our system, so suspensions, all those kinds of things. So if we, and so we have that data, and some of it's shared with the state, and some of it isn't. So that's a whole data privacy discussion. But if we are doing, if we initiate work around behavior, social, emotional well-being, and we anticipate it's going to affect behavior incidents or other things we're keeping track of, and we have the data, that would be our data then to analyze, so, but that would be our decision to do that. And so I would just say that we will tap CDE's model for the resources it provides, and when the shoe fits, we'll probably wear it. And if it saves us some money, because we can put their shoe on and wear it, we'll do that too. So the shared decision-making or the shared leadership model, so you know, we have a recent history of doing a lot of that work ourselves, and so we actually have a team in the district having that conversation, at some point we'll say, how compatible is that, and where does that fit into the decision-making around the sacks at each school, and how healthy are those? So I would say that's in progressive discussion right now, but we don't have to embrace, but if we look at the CDE model on shared leadership, and we say, that informs us, we could do, we could do it better, and that would help us do it better, or some parts of it. So I think we'll cherry pick, and pick and choose, and probably try some things, and get if it shoe fits, we'll probably wear it for a while. But I, but we're not, once we, we didn't like sign something and say, we're in, we're doing everything. It's really us tapping into the model and saying, let's use what works for us now. And what works in three years might be different than what we see today as well. And so some of the data or the development may be undeveloped even at the state level yet, that's a possibility.
Right. Yeah, well, you know, releasing discipline data is scary enough, but I can't even imagine what else they might come up with, so I would want us to take another look at what that is going to be, before we agree to that.
Yeah.
Okay, thanks.
Colleagues, anyone else? Nope. Okay. You guys are working hard. Thank you, Leslie, thank you, Bruce, on this work.
Yep, thank you.
A lot of good questions.
We'll be back, whatever the next date is that says, we'll be back with another presentation.
All right, well, thank you very much. Okay, the next item on our agenda is action items, the consent grouping, and I will read them. Personnel items, 7.1, personnel items, 7.2, approval of minutes, October 27, 2015, regular meeting, 7.3, acceptance of donation, Aspen Creek, K8, 7.4, acceptance of donation, Southern Hills Middle School, 7.5, cancellation of the November 24, 2015, board meeting, 7.6, endorsement of Boulder Nobel Circles Nobel Laureate Recognition Project Resolution 15-20, and 7.7, new course proposal for 2016-2017. Do I have a motion to approve? Jenny, is there a second? Tina, are there any items that anyone would like to pull? Seeing none, are there any items that we have questions about? Jenny?
So I've got a question about the new course, the new courses.
Okay.
And, that item, and my question has to do with the 10th and 11th grade language, English Language Arts.
So I sent you an email, Jenny?
Did you send me an email that I didn't get yet?
That's all right. So it's a title change.
Oh, it's...
Yeah.
But we're still, but it's still a world-lit class.
Same course, it's the same curriculum that you approved in 11-12.
So we're not, we're not changing anything but the title.
So Sam prepared a response, and I sent it to you, so, but yes.
Thank you, Sam.
So it's a touchy, so we got...
Sorry it was so late.
No, that's all right.
Okay. So just if anybody wondered, I happened to look at the 10th grade Language Arts and noticed that it didn't call it world-lit anymore, and I thought, I wondered if we changed that, or American Lit for 11th grade. Apparently not, thank you.
We're good, yeah, thanks.
Sure, Shelley?
On the same topic, I noticed that section two is course description changes, and so there's all the verbiage about what the course is about, you know, summary. But it's hard to tell what the changes were from that. You can see the changes in the titles later on, because it shows you what it was before and what it was after. But is there some document you could go to to say, like, how Business Foundations looks different now than it did before?
The course description?
Before we made this change?
Yeah, the course description has changed. So do we have a red-line document, Ron, that would show the changes? Because we can certainly send it to the board.
I mean, I don't know, I don't want, I'm not just in holding up approval, it's just that it was really hard to...
Yeah, that's a good question. Actually, what happens is that, and this was part of an extensive curriculum audit, that's why you have 161 changes there. And so what we really took was, you know, all the schools had various descriptions along the same lines. So we don't have one master course audit or catalog that we redlined, rather, we pulled together, and then we made decisions about what would be the consistent description of the course.
Okay.
Okay, that makes sense.
Dr. Ron Cabrera, Assistant Superintendent for Structural Services and Equity.
Thank you.
Thank you. Just in case somebody was watching, they didn't know who he was.
Anyone else? And so, I would just ask the question about the process of this, the teachers, I mean, like, who compiled this?
So the description that Sam and Dr. Messier and Dr. Cabrera prepared that introduces this is a pretty extensive description of the process we go through. So, yeah, I mean, this, these, this is mostly teachers who do this, that bring it forward, so that what Ron just described, for example, is bringing that together. So we have an approval process that we work through, so, and we provided that intro to give you some description of what that involves. So they're very involved. And I, this notion of the audit and the review and the kind of cleaning up is real important and very time-intensive, but I just want to acknowledge, Dr. Messier, you know her as the Science Director for the District, which she still is, but in that department, people do other things too, and so this is one of the areas Sam has also provided excellent leadership on, and so, I feel like we're in a pretty good place.
Just make another comment, Lori.
Sure.
Yeah, I just want to say, I really appreciated the relabeling of the courses, like, to things like Theater 1, Theater 2, and Theater 3. I think that that's really helpful, instead of calling, you know, calling something something and not knowing, yeah, where it comes in the lineup. So I thought it was, it's very much cleaned up in that way.
Good, well, thanks for that feedback.
Okay, any other questions or comments? Okay, well, seeing no other questions or comments, Sandy, we call the vote.
Albright?
Yes?
Belleville?
Yes.
Benford?
Yes.
Marquess?
Myers?
Yes.
Reed?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. The next on our agenda is agenda setting. Is there any items anybody wants to talk about in upcoming meetings?
So I just want to remind you, on December 1st, that's a 5:00 start, Sandy, with the reception, and then we'll follow that with the reorganization meeting, so that, I think you all have it on your calendar, so we look forward to that. And then, the 8th, we'll be back for our regular business meeting, that, is that right? Whatever, yeah, the 8th. So, that's all on your calendar. And then, Sandy's been communicating with you on some things around the Colorado Association school boards, our elects are gone, but anyway, we'll, you know, be at the conference, and then obviously do some debriefing after the conference as a part of the December 8th agenda. So, anyway, we followed up on that for the agenda setting, so that'll get us into December. Then the 15th, Briggs, we're still planning on the 15th with our work session with our area legislators.